Okay. One-minute warning. Wow, that, this crowd got quiet quickly.
And if you're planning to speak, please fill out a pink speaker slip and they're located on both sides of the wall.
All set? Okay. We'll call this meeting to order if the clerk will call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember San Antonio.
Present.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers.
Here.
Record will show that all members of the City Council are present.
And we'll get right to it with Agenda Item Number One. It's the only item on the agenda tonight, and that is the status update regarding the implementation of the Homeless Action Plan, and the contact person is Housing Services Manager Dacey. And with that, we'll start with a, a, did I forget anything this time? No. Staff report. Usually I go so fast to the staff report and skip something.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. I'm Melinda Dacey, the Housing Services Manager at the City of Encinitas, and with me this evening I have Patty Anders, Planning Manager of Policy Planning and Housing, Scott Drapkin, our Development Services Director, Shane Watts, Sheriff's Captain. We have some additional staff to answer any kind of other questions that may come up from the presentation and the comments this evening. And so, on May 14th, City Council received an update on the Homeless Action Plan as well as the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program Extension request for approval to extend the program until December 31st, 2025. At that meeting, City Council directed staff to return to a special City Council meeting for the Homeless Action Plan update and to also have a future meeting item for the Safe Parking Program Extension to be formally approved by Council. Subsequently to that meeting, May 28th, the City Council had introduced the budget, which included funding to retain the existing current staff vacancy and to have staff do the recruitment for that vacancy, as well as funding for two full-time, five-days-a-week, 40-hours-per-day street outreach and case management service provider.
Per week, I hope.
Per week.
We do like our employees working 40 hours per day, though, so.
And in between those times, the 2025 point-in-time count data was released. There was a decrease in the homeless population throughout the region and the city, which displays that the efforts as a region and the city have been working. The homeless count shows a reduction in 32 unsheltered homeless individuals and 19 unhoused individuals. So the point-in-time count trends over the last 10 years, this shows that the city's point-in-time count information has remained relatively consistent. The 2021 point-in-time count did not take place due to COVID. And the, based on the direction that we received, there are some future City Council actions that are in the works. So the resolution to extend the JFS Safe Parking Program is scheduled for June 11th. We have also received a notice of intent toward funds for the permanent local housing allocation grant program, which is a Housing and Community Development Services Grant Program, and the funding amount is $236,000. We have the award acceptance scheduled for the June 25th, 2025 City Council meeting. Those funds are currently in the budget for City Council's consideration for the Buena Creek Navigation Center. With that, this concludes staff's presentation, and we are looking for City Council direction to update the Homeless Action Plan goals and activities and to receive the report.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any preliminary questions from Council? I think not. So with that, how many public speaker, well, it looks like the?
14, someone.
Question?
Yep, go ahead, Jim.
What is the data beyond the point-in-time that we use to confirm success or, or the success of the program?
Based on the point-in-time count trends, we do have an increase in sheltered homeless. Some of the numbers for the sheltered homeless do include the beds that were filled the night of the point-in-time count, so the Buena Creek Navigation Center beds are counted in the Encinitas sheltered count.
Okay.
For 2025, and it's all of the efforts that the city has done over the last calendar year shows the decrease.
Okay, my question was, is that the only, so the answer is yes, that's the only metric we're using to designate whether this is a success or not?
This is the federal metric on how many unhoused individuals there are within the nation on a single night.
I understand, I'm just asking if we're using anything else. We don't have to just do the standard, we can do what's excellent, whatever, I'm just, or what's, whatever, but we have a, I'm asking if this is, yes or no, this is the only metric we use?
No, we also analyze the program specifics that we have funding for and that we're providing funding for, such as the JFS Safe Parking Program. We are not directly funding that, but they do provide data on a monthly basis, and the, all of the data reporting for each of the programs is what determines the success of the Homeless Action Plan implementation.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Lyons?
Yeah, I just have a question about this slide as well. There was a change in how the count was conducted. Can you talk about that over time? Because one of the things I think we might do just naturally is look back over time and see how things have changed. Can you characterize how the standards for counting have changed over the last few years?
I'm not aware of changes of how the count is done. We do have some service providers that do participate in that count that can answer some of those questions specifically.
I was just going to add that since it's an RTFH program, the city doesn't have control over the program, so we aren't aware of any recent changes, but we would defer to RTFH on any kind of programmatic changes for the count and data analysis.
Okay, just one thing, if I could follow up on that. You had mentioned that because of our Buena Creek Navigation Center, because we're investing and helping our homeless with solutions for not only finding homes, but also for connecting with services, those are part of our count, but they're, you're saying, and, but they're intentionally people we are, that we have in our programs, and they are part of our count. And also, the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program is also in our count, even though that is also a program where we're connecting people with services, so I guess I just want to tease that out a little bit. Those are, those are both in our count, but they're not what I would consider traditionally on the street and homeless. Am I characterizing that correctly?
Yes, all of the Safe Parking Program, Buena Creek Navigation Center, any other service provider in the city that is providing shelter, even the emergency shelters through interfaith community, those all contribute to the sheltered count.
So I guess I'm just trying to make a fine point on, on the data in that before we had those programs, before we were thinking about having programs to help our homeless with solutions, we wouldn't have had people to count in those programs. So I think there's a distinction in my mind between people that are in programs that we are actively assisting, and then people who are not in programs. And the point-in-time count doesn't distinguish between the two. They're all part of the total.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to pile on. More, more questions about this chart, which is, it's a really kind of the bottom-line chart, so, and, and, so the first question is, it says Encinitas, but I think we all know that it's Encinitas, Solana Beach, Del Mar, and, and Santa Gito are parts of Rancho Santa Fe. And did, did we ever get clarification how far east it goes as far as the actual point-in-time count?
Melinda's going to pull up a map for you.
Oh, perfect.
And so we did get this map prepared by our IT departments. It shows all of the tracts, at least east of Encinitas. The Solana Beach and Del Mar tracks, I have a different map for that, but for you to see where the areas go outside of the city boundaries regarding the tract maps that are used for the point-in-time count, this is some information for how far to the east it goes.
So it includes some of the areas of San Lio Hills, but not the maybe main residential portion? And it looks like it goes not quite to I-15, but maybe a mile or two short to the, I'm just trying to get an understanding so we know what we're measuring and, you know, it is what it is.
You had asked at our previous meeting if it included areas like Forest Ranch, and we did confirm that, that it doesn't stretch that far.
Okay, but it, but it's very close. I'm looking at that right-hand side of, where it says Ranch, where the words Rancho Santa Fe are, Ranch of Santa Fe is, is that not over the top of Forest Ranch? Not included, I agree.
Forest Ranch is just a little further east of this location. I don't know if you can see my mouse moving around on the screen. It's a little further east, but not shown on the graphic here.
Okay, so, and do we have any idea of, yeah, I'm going, I, my working assumption has always been that the numbers we see on our point-in-time count, Encinitas is probably 85 to 95% of those numbers. I don't, do we have any idea how many homeless are downtown, like in Solana Beach and Del Mar?
We don't, I, we don't have the tract-specific count information at this time. The 2024 point-in-time count information, at least for Encinitas, the concentration was in the downtown tract area as well as some of the other parks.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. No other questions, or, oh, Jim?
Just point of clarifications for our audience. The point-in-time count is one day every 365 days, so it's one 365th snapshot.
I don't know if it's every 365 days, but it's once every year, and it's usually around January.
The year's 365 days, essentially. I don't know what the percentage is. If there is a event happening in another city, does it account for that? That might draw people to different directions. To populate one city versus another.
As far as the point-in-time count is concerned?
Yes.
The count is done everywhere within the region on the same night.
Okay, so no. All right, thank you.
Just one more question. Who conducts the count? Who are the people involved?
Typically, it's volunteer-based, as well as the service providers that do participate and provide services to the unhoused population. Those are the people that volunteer to participate in the count.
So do we have a list of the different groups that they volunteer for?
The city does not maintain that process. That is done by the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, and they have a registration and training process to.
At the regional level?
Have everybody go out and do the, conduct the count consistently throughout the region.
At, so at the county level? They have to sign up there?
The Regional Task Force on the Homeless is a separate entity from the County of San Diego, but, yes, as a region.
Do we know how many volunteers we had for Encinitas?
I do not know the total volunteer count from this year, but the CRC is here and they had managed that, and they have that information.
So that's one group, so you do know a group, so do you know any other groups that were primary groups that were a part of the volunteer basis? So you, you're deferring to the CRC, but there's other groups, right, that do this?
If I may, yes, so many community organizations, individuals volunteer, but because it's not our program, we don't have access to the whole list of, of that database.
Well, that, it's kind of weird, right? Because we're the ones required to make a decision on this and these types of programs, but we don't have a count as to who's doing the count? We don't make sure that we monitor what the county or the regional, sorry, the regional task force is doing for us?
We don't regulate their program now, there is.
It's not a regulation, it's just a question to make sure that we can clarify our numbers against what we're accounting.
I'm sorry, can you clarify your question?
Who's doing the count? Do we have a list of who did the count?
We do not, that is only RTFH.
Can we get it?
I don't know if they release that, we can certainly request it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And, and one point of clarification is that the, anybody can volunteer, I tried to volunteer, but I was out of town last, last year, so it's not like they're selecting by anybody and everybody, and I, if I look around the room here, I think there are quite a few out here that did volunteer, that I've seen talk about it or post about it, so.
I get that, it's, the fact is that we're, we're, we have a program in a city, which is, which is what really the issue is, we can get to this after speakers, but it's a regional issue.
Yeah.
We all know that, so there's a regional count, but then the city's using regional numbers that we're not getting regional support on necessarily, so I want to make sure that we're auditing the regional task force, because we're the ones executing.
It's a fair question, I just wanted, because I, I've tried to go through the volunteer and the online training, but like I say, I wasn't available that night, so, but it, but it is, it's not a pre-selected group, it, it's not like the CRC is putting it up. My understanding is it's individuals who happen to be associated with different organizations, be it CRC, St. Andrews, could be, you know, anybody in the city of Encinitas if you, if you go to the link, so, you know, and, and I encourage, I, I think it's on my calendar, I, I talked to the Regional Task Force in Housing last year after I missed it, and I said, "Okay, when is it for next year so I can reserve the night on my calendar?" And so I've got it on my calendar already, it's, what, early in January is my recollection.
Yeah, so it'd be great to have those numbers, and it'd be something that we'd want to have year to year as we, as we do this, as the night comes up, to have those numbers, and how many people from our community are volunteering. It would just be great to be able to audit ourselves on execution of what it is we're doing in our own program.
We, we want to avoid conflicts of interest as well.
100%.
Absolutely.
There's $24 billion went missing from the state of California last year. Where did it go?
Okay, any other, oh, Marco?
I just had a question, excuse if I don't really know this, but is, is there a reason we only do one, one point-in-time count a year? Or is like, is there, is it a, is it a fairly involved process?
The point-in-time count is a federally mandated point-in-time count that is done to determine on any given night within the nation how many people are unhoused. So it's a federal requirement, and it's only done on the one night, it's not required to be done more than once.
But if we, would we be able to do, I guess not our own, but would we be able to do that within the county, or is it just, I mean, you keep saying it's federal, so I'm just asking, is it possible to do more? Or is it just the one and done, and?
It is very difficult to get the volunteers needed for once a year, so it is, and it's funded at the county level. I don't know any, in my years of experience, any jurisdiction that has ever taken it on.
Okay, I was just asking, because, you know, we, this, obviously we have some big decisions ahead of us, and based on one night, it's, it's a lot to make a decision of, and clearly you see the people in the room, it's probably a very small amount of the people that, you know, are, have some, some real, you know, feelings about this, so I just want to be sure we get all the information, so, thanks for answering.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lyons?
Just maybe to fill in a few data gaps, just for awareness, the point-in-time count is one piece of information, but we also, and in your report, we itemize how many people are in each of the programs, and what kinds of exits they have from the programs, and how many of those people end up in permanent housing. So we do have other numbers that help us judge the success of our programs here in the city. I just wanted to make a statement there, and if I said anything incorrectly, please, please let me know. No, that's okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make that point, thanks.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Okay, I want to follow that up. As I understand it, our, we only have four contracts per, what I was told yesterday in our briefing, JFMS, BCSC, Food Pantry Program, and our advocates, our Advocate Services, Senior Law Services. Is that correct?
Yes, our current programs that we have MOUs with are for the Buena Creek Navigation Center and our services, our service provider, Retread, JFS Safe Parking Program, and the Legal Aid Society of San Diego is who you had mentioned, that they're primarily funded through our CDBG funds, and they provide fair housing services.
And then we use our, on the sheriff's side, use the Hope Team.
Correct.
Do all of those programs provide us data?
Yes.
Do they provide us where the person is a year later data?
That is something that we could request to find out if there's recidivism rate.
But they don't right now?
Not that I've seen in the reporting, no.
Okay, so we are going off whatever data they have provided us? Which is, okay, I'm just clarifying for everybody in the room.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, if we have no other questions, we'll go to public speakers. How many do we have now?
We have 17.
17, and we'll go full three minutes tonight, because this, this is one item, and that's one of the advantages of having a single-item night, is that we can.
We have several time donations.
Yeah, we'll do, yeah, several time donations, too? Yeah.
I'm going to call you three at a time, and then I'm also, with the time donation, your time donator needs to be present, so I'll call that name as well. First speaker is Brad Levkowitz with time donation from Scott Chatfield, who is here in the room, John Van Cleef with time donation from Karen Koblenz, Karen I know was here, Karen? She's still here? Oh, there she is, and Karen Gaskar, thank you, and then Molly Hintley, I'm with a time donation from Jerry Jones, and Jerry is here, yes, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, and Councilmembers. I want to make a couple points here tonight, but the main one is this. Homelessness is a complicated, multifactorial problem. The root causes are layered and interconnected between city, county, state, and national issues. My hope is that tonight, as you all discuss this issue, you do so with compassion and the nuance required to make progress on this incredibly difficult issue. I hope you avoid blanket statements about why people find themselves out of a home. Yes, mental health and substance abuse issues are too often interconnected reasons people end up on the streets, and they are often the most visible reasons, but they are certainly not the only reasons. Bad choices are another reason, bad, so is bad luck. There are people who are escaping domestic violence. I hope you go out of your way to acknowledge that reality. Acknowledge that most often those cases involve women and children with nowhere to go, and acknowledge what organizations like the CRC are already doing for people, for families, for mothers and children in that position. There are systemic issues like our broken healthcare system. There are systemic issues like housing affordability. Again, not the only cause, but both data and common sense make it clear. When homes are prohibitively expensive, homelessness becomes more common and harder to solve. I hope you all can acknowledge that reality. Councilmember San Antonio, you've shared the story of your employee before. If you're comfortable, I hope you also share the math. What do you pay him? How many hours does he work? How far does that go in Encinitas? That context matters. If we can acknowledge the complexity of this issue and approach it with the humanity required to put yourself in someone else's shoes, then we can start to talk about solutions. Tough love is a slogan, it's not a solution. Solutions require resources. Solutions require money. I do not think anyone in this room opposes enforcing the law. I think many, if not all, would support an increased police presence downtown to help ensure our residents, business owners, and employees are safe. I know I would support that. What I do not support is that the conversation ends there. We need to work with the county, with service providers, and we need to invest in staff and our own resources as well. Homelessness is a complicated, multifactorial problem. I hope you go, I hope you all go out of your way to acknowledge that tonight and avoid the temptation to make blanket generalizations. I hope you spend more time looking forward at what is under your control than looking backward to place blame. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm John Van Cleef, and I represent Community Resource Center. Want to thank you for your continued leadership and for making space in this chamber for thoughtful conversation about how we respond to homelessness with compassion and accountability. I want to affirm CRC's support of the intent and direction of the city's Homelessness Action Plan. It provides a framework grounded in data, coordination, accountability, and care, and with each passing year, we have more clarity about what's working and what's needed to move forward. We're seeing signs of progress. As already mentioned, between 2024 and 2025, the unsheltered homelessness population in Encinitas decreased by 26%. That didn't happen by accident, it happened because of actions taken by this council to invest in outreach, expand services, and strengthen partnerships. One of the most promising examples of progress in the last year is the Buena Creek Navigation Center. Thanks to recent coordination with the city staff, CRC can now directly refer clients to those 12 beds, an essential step in realizing the HAP and helping people move from street to shelter and ultimately to housing. That is alignment with the Housing, uh, Homelessness Action Plan in action. And that alignment matters because the HAP is not just a policy statement, it's a call to action. to action and a reminder that housing is a process. As I've shared before, we need to think about this in terms of the ABCs of homelessness solutions. A, any bed, like a shelter that offers safe refuge. B is for a better bed, transitional or supportive housing with services. C is for continual bed, permanent, stable housing that ends the cycle. Encinitas is advancing A through Buena Creek and its regional partnerships. Now we have an opportunity to move further by reinvesting in B, effective and proven programs like opening doors that connect people with support and sustainability. And the city is also addressing C, permanent housing through its housing element. I also encourage the city council to take bold leadership to cite, build, and fund an emergency shelter in Encinitas. Cities that have done this, like Carlsbad, like Oceanside, like Huntington Beach, are seeing real results. Huntington Beach has recently opened one hundred and seventy-four bed navigation center. Number of beds, based on the average of their annual point in time count, has helped more than five hundred people in just two years. That's what's possible when you match scale with need and follow through with care, resource, accountability, and coordination locally and across the country, including Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Huntington Beach. The most effective communities are guided by Housing First. This approach recognizes that people are best able to address the challenges in their lives, whether related to health, employment, or recovery, when they first have a safe and stable place to sleep. It's also important to state that Housing First is not, as people claim, Housing Only. It is Housing with Services, Housing with Support, Housing with Accountability, and Housing with Hope. It's a proven strategy that aligns with the cities, the intent of the city's Homelessness Action Plan. Of course, none of this works takes place in a vacuum, but there continues to be confusion, misinformation, and intentional attempts to conflate issues of homelessness from people in this community, particularly in relationship to CRC's building project. CRC's building project and the HAP are not the same thing. They are two distinct, though complementary, efforts. CRC is not expanding to bring in homelessness. We are improving our facilities to serve existing clients who are facing food insecurity, domestic violence, and housing instability. Our project will improve access to services that align with the city's HAP by offering more coordinated case management, emergency assistance, mental health services, and pathways to housing. Unfortunately, there are people in this community, including realtors, the owner of multifamily residences, who are 2024 campaign impact donors, who continue to implement a misinformation campaign about CRC's work and intentions. These narratives appear to be driven less by concern for the community's well-being and more by an interest in unlocking the value of CRC's property for their own personal gain. Let me be blunt, CRC's property is not for sale. Furthermore, we are working transparently with the city's planning department through the design review process and the final project will be compliant with all law. Attempting to pit the community against this project by intentionally spreading misinformation is irresponsible and for a sitting council member to endorse this information campaign on a social media platform while the project is undergoing due process is unethical. Encinitas deserves better than fear-based messaging. Encinitas deserves thoughtful policy rooted in facts, compassion, accountability, and results. The current Homelessness Action Plan gives Encinitas a vision for the future and a path toward realizing that vision. We have examples locally and nationally that show us what success can look like. Now you have the chance to lead with compassion and accountability. As I've said before, reaching functional zero homelessness would reflect the best of who we are as a community, coordinated, courageous, committed, and accountable to dignity for all. Thank you.
And then following Molly is Bob Kent with a time donation from Kim Piker. Kim, are you here? Thank you. And then Natalie Satune and then Dave Dean with a time donation from Tracy Conkey. And Tracy, I think you're here. Oh, there you are. Thank you.
Good evening, Council Mayor Molly Hintlin, District Two. The HAP is in its first three years, which is great. The unhoused crisis is a national, state, and county issue. While we formalized a nice, local-focused program, we've not fully achieved the results for community needs to feel safe, specifically addressing the chronic li- unhoused that refuse services. Either they suffer from psychosis or substance abuse, or worse, both, we need to do more with our enforcement. Yes, tough love is an approach. I'm sharing a few clips from the April sixteenth meeting where it's evident both CRC and the city need to implement enforcement. The videos are a statement that reinforce the need for action locally.
Honestly, we, we are looking for nighttime and sourcing a security patrol to come around at nighttime. There's two parts to that is making sure that in and around CRC, that we don't have people sleeping in our doorway, as well as honestly making sure the people who come to us for service feel safe in the, in the place. So taking that step is something we're working on. And then again, being intentionally and proactive in engaging with the people who come to us, especially if we're, if they're waiting for food and making sure that they understand the code of conduct and holding them accountable for adherence to the code of conduct. And so yet, that's a start of the conversation and something we're working on.
Okay, thank you.
Honestly, we, we are.
Sorry. So that addresses the security and next video.
And move along and that will usually correct behavior issues. Then, then it can escalate to a week suspension. We've had people suspended for a month and then we also have had people indefinitely suspended because either the behavior issue was so severe that it was a threat, you know, physical harm or threat to others and self, or it was just, again, the progression and the continuance in violating the code of conduct persisted. And so it, we aim to be appropriate and measured in enforcing the code of conduct and the suspension of service, but it does happen on a regular basis. So garden variety is, would be two people who are having a heated argument in the breezeway. They start yelling and cussing at each other. People feel afraid, they have to go. And, and that one is usually, it's just, oftentimes it will start with a one-day.
Next. So when they turn people away who are not abiding by the rules of conduct, where are these people going? Next video.
Usually it's just a bad moment between two people.
Where do you send them?
Most, it, it depends. Some of the people who leave CRC live in the community, so they'll drive and go home. There are people who are unsheltered, who live in the, who are in the community and they go back to their place where they're sleeping outside. If there are serious issues around that, we do engage with the sheriff department and we will have deputies come if, if, again, there's, there's escalating behavior and a sheriff's response is appropriate to the situation.
So as stated, the conduct, when it deems escalation, that's a concern and we need to have security and we need to have a solution for keeping our residents safe because these unhoused individuals that need more than just a food pantry, they need mental health support, they need buena vista, they need the intervention. And I think that something that should be brought into our homeless action plan is enforcement with tough love. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Bob Kent, Encinitas resident. Thank you for your leadership in addressing homelessness in our community. I respectfully request that you support the continued implementation of the Homeless Action Plan, reflecting our community values and evidence-based practices, along with accountability and compassion, to help more people who are unfortunately at risk or experiencing homelessness in our community. So first, thank you for supporting the Safe Parking Program and for continuing, hopefully, to fund the Buena Creek Navigation Center. These two programs are integral to the HAP by helping people regain their footing and build a bridge from homelessness to safe and stable housing, which is basically a key tenet of the Homeless Action Plan. And yes, we should enforce our laws around public safety while continuing to move the needle forward to help our unhoused neighbors. I don't, I don't think this is an either or proposition. The plan for an individual who may not be following the law is much different than for the senior who needs some help, who's living on the edge or in their car or on the streets because their fixed income is not enough to cover their housing costs, or the Maricosta student who's housing insecure, living in their car or couch surfing, or the retired veteran who served our country on disability but really needs some help navigating a very complex system. So I support making additional investments, I think as noted in the staff report, filling the vacant homeless support coordinator position, adding case management outreach services, and I would add, coupled with committing resources to housing navigation efforts, including landlord engagement and flex funding. Case management is a long-term approach that focuses on addressing a person's overall needs. That's key. While housing navigation is more focused on helping people secure permanent housing as quickly as possible, and that is a key tenet again of the Homeless Action Plan. So I hope you'll consider that. I also really support the city's efforts to develop a citywide by-name list, which is a key component of Community Solutions Built for Zero Program, a data-driven Housing First model that has demonstrated success in reducing and solving homelessness in communities of all shapes and sizes throughout our country, including up the street Redondo Beach, which is, I think, about the same size as Encinitas. Since the point in time count is a single snapshot in time, a data point, implementing the by-name list will provide the city important up-to-date data to better match housing solutions with the needs of the individual, to test program effectiveness, which I think is key, and to understand whether our efforts are actually helping to truly reduce homelessness, to reach functional zero where homelessness is brief and one time. It's also, the point, the, the, the by-name list is also an important tool for collaboration with community partners, whether it be law enforcement, the county mental health providers, Scripps Hospital, our local school districts, Maricosta College, and our service providers like CRC, who I believe is an essential community partner as we move forward. Addressing homelessness is not a one-size-fits-all approach. I think we know that. It truly takes a data-driven collaborative effort. Please continue to invest and implement the adopted plan. It's the right decision for Encinitas. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and Council, Natalie Satune Cardiff. Thank you for your fiscal stewardship and leadership. I am here tonight because we have a limited tax base and most of our resources are, are, they are from our bedroom community property tax and the fiscal reality of our town is dependent on this. The state policies have failed to the tune of twenty-four billion dollars and the HAP that we have been acting under has been under the influence of Tony Atkins. So I'm asking that the council redirect to local concern. I'm also here to discuss the unintended consequences of some failed votes from prior council. We need to accept responsibility for our city's prior leadership neglect. We have not prosecuted ordinance violations. Every city around us uses their code enforcement to cite violators and we exclusively depend on our San Diego sheriff or mainly depend on our San Diego sheriff. A week and a half ago, the San Diego sheriff had an issue with a homeless person at the Moonlight parking lot and it was questioned that she, why did we need this? And it was because she used a butcher knife and an axe on a deputy. So every shift, we also have a sheriff, main, almost, we lose almost one sheriff to the emergency room because they have some kind of a prisoner in custody. So it's taken a sheriff out of rotation. I'm not sure you're aware of that. We really need to discuss some irreversible consequences that the homeless have brought here. Even Surfers Point, down to Surfers Point, we've had the homeless irreversibly change the structure of our land. So I put some things together. I sent ten ideas that we need to consider, create a joint collaboration between code enforcement and the housing department, collaborate exclusively, exclusively with nonprofits that report data monthly, task Public Works with sanitizing sidewalks, alleyways, and restaurant build-outs to prevent disease, effectuate ordinance prohibiting homeless crime, better support our deputies, implement policy between Encinitas Fire Department and Sheriff to ensure that all the calls for under the influence are properly closed, suspend the JFS lot after the contract ends to reduce our reputation for being homeless tolerant, and eradicate the strategy of reimagining policing. Thank you.
And then following Dave Dean will be Scott Campbell with a time donation from Danette Poole. Danette, are you here? There you are. Thank you. Followed by Sheila Cameron, Felicia Weinbaum, and then David Weinbaum.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Staff, and Community. Dave Dean, Dave's Rock Garden. I spend a tremendous amount of time in the Rock Garden and at the American Legion Hall early in the morning and throughout the day, so I have a very acute sighting of what goes on in this community, especially on the streets. My father taught me a few lessons in life. One of them was always protect women and children and if you want to know the answer, follow the money. In that light, I am also a commercial real estate agent and have been for twenty-five years here in North County. Currently, we are at the highest vacancy rate for retail property here in Encinitas since two thousand and nine. I recently completed a transaction where my client received six months of free rent and five hundred additional square feet of space at no cost. That happens because of the current retail challenges that our retail people are facing. And what we need is to make sure that our community stays strong in many ways and certainly one of them is financial and to help protect the people who have businesses in our community. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. And the other issue that I just brought up was safety of women and children. And unfortunately, due to some of the challenge people that are homeless right now, we, some of the women and children do not feel safe going downtown. And what they're choosing to do is go to neighborhood communities where they feel safer to make their purchases. That's, that's the reality of it. I would like you to do what we can to help the challenge people who are homeless, but also we need to protect our community and our downtown community. So in my mind, there is more affordable places to conduct this business for communities like the CRC where they could find more affordable locations other than the most expensive part of town. And in that light, they should be able to do greater good for the people that they're trying to serve. The other day, I was working outside the American Legion Hall, four o'clock in the afternoon, and a mother and three children were walking down Second Street past the Legion. They saw three homeless gentlemen out in front of the CRC. They got nervous. They got nervous. One of the girls said, "Mom, we better go to the other side of the street." And they turned around, walked to the other side of the street to go down because they did not feel safe. Also, in front of the Legion the other night, a lady wanted to come into the Legion, but because of the behavior of apparently a homeless person in his car, she chose not to go into the Legion. Two days later, that gentleman was arrested. So these are, you know, real behaviors that are taking place in our community, and we need to protect the women and children. We need to protect the financial stability of our businesses downtown, and I'd like you to keep that in mind when you're making your decisions. Thank you.[646.04][646.04][applause]
Okay. This is about this document. It's not about providers. It's about the document and whether it's done good or not. Good data is really hard to get, as we're going to see. This is more about, this is more than downtown, and there's environmental issues, as we've heard. First off, look at the money. Where's the money coming from? The homeless are not bringing in money to the city, but we're spending money a lot. This is kind of a little interesting thing. The sequence statement, it talks about direct and indirect physical changes. These homeless guys are making direct changes to the environment. We should take this nonsense language out and, or at least look at it. It's a waste of everybody's time. Okay, so here's, we're going to do a case study. This is this one particular person. I don't know if he's in the, in the stats or not. We see this kind of tense stuff, but this is what was going on behind that. This guy had a whole house. He built. He dug in there. Look at, I mean, he had transportation. He had clothes hangers. He's making his chicken dinner right there. I was talking to him, and he's waving his knife in front of my face. I was a little bit scared, but we're buddies. I know his name. We're cool. This is what happened afterwards. The result, the only solution was to actually cut down all the trees. It was the only way to get rid of this particular situation, and you can see the damage that was done, environmental damage. He came back to another spot. He came back to City on Parkland and set up a massive setup. He was cooking. Fires, you know, fires is a big deal. We hear about drugs, drug use. Well, this guy was making drugs and distributing drugs. I'm not, you can look in the pictures if you want. He got booted. He came back. This is a totally different setup. Same guy, completely different equipment. Once again, he's degrading our environment. Once again, after it was all done, and you can see what he did, he dug higher than I could reach, permanent damage to our brand-new city park. Okay, so this Housing Action Plan, I gave it some grades. I'm a tough grader, but I'm not, I'm fair. It was three goals. Increase the capacity. We have the HMIS. I was unaware of that. This has been going on for several years. I'm kind of surprised and dismayed that it was, just until recently, it became to our attention. Decrease the number of people, that's, we didn't, haven't done good, and we actually have increased temporary storage. That's a positive thing, you know, we can talk about the effectiveness, but we have increased it. Now, the HMS dashboard is pretty interesting. You can chart it by city, jurisdiction, provider, all sorts of things, but like, again, good data is hard to find. The data on this number, don't jibe with the point and count. They don't jibe with the staff reports. None of the data is really consistent. It's almost impossible to really figure out what's going on. Now, my answer to you is, we included this in the report, and this is great. I used it, as you saw earlier. The numbers show increasing. The point in time shows decreasing. Which is it? The truth is out there somewhere, but I don't think any of our data is actually true. Now, the point in time is good. We need more numbers on there. I could, I could put some deviations on there. I think some of us have seen that. Let's just put the average line on there. We're well above the 10-year average. I would say this is not success. This HAP came in in 2021. We're well above those numbers, too. So we haven't really, no, the, the plan has not worked. We have it, and I monitor our recommendations that we change it. Add some goals, add some numeric goals that are measurable. Words like better, more, less. Those are easily achievable because you can say, well, there's one person was helped. That's more. That's, that's kind of ridiculous. We need some numbers. Even if they're not achievable, there's no legal goals on these numbers. In fact, it's not even really clear why we have to have this document. I looked at the city website, and it talks about how it's used, but it doesn't say it's required. Nothing that I could find today, I looked at all sorts of documents, actually say we have to have this document. Now, if we do, HUD, and there's various federal databases, what is required to be in this document? We have a lot of stuff in this document, and maybe too much stuff. We got a lot of editorial content. Let's take all of that stuff out and just cut on hard numbers, and so we can really see the effectiveness of how this is working. We have providers behind me. They're, they're doing good work. You know, we're going to be talking about this next week, about the parking lot. Today's not appropriate. Today's only, we're supposed to be talking about the document, and thank you.[973.36][973.36][applause]
Sheila Cameron. Sorry, Sheila, then Felicia, and then David Weinbaum, and then Lupita Barnett.
Sorry, I lost track of where I was in the lineup. Okay. We do not have a homeless crisis. We have a mental health and addiction crisis. We need to recognize and address this issue in that way. The estimates for people who suffer from either, both of these conditions, is 66% to 75% in most things that you read about. This is not just Encinitas, but applies to the 800,000 estimated homeless population across our entire nation. California is the state with the largest population. To really conquer these issues, we need a combination of legal enforcement and medical psychiatric approach. The court decision Grants Pass versus Johnson is a move toward greater support for legal actions. If we don't go in this direction, no amount of money and Band-Aids put on this open wound is going to make a difference. It just isn't. Despite all of this wonderful analysis, the roots of the majority of homelessness will not change. Father Joe's Center in San Diego has finally realized that at the core of homelessness is sobriety, and they have recognized that that was a gap in their approach to homelessness and are adding a sobriety center to one of their three San Diego centers. They are massive, and they have a ton of money, most of it private. You have received 56 letters from people against this HAP, counting individuals only once, even though some of the letters came in twice. Many of these residents have personally experienced the failure of the HAP and all of its contributions because they either live, work, or visit downtown. They have offered thoughtful input. Elena Thompson has laid out a unique pragmatic and practical approach to helping our city achieve the balance we need. Like her or not, she and I don't always see eye to eye, but I think she really understands this thoroughly and has put a lot of thought into it. Per staff's conclusion on page 38, "A constant refrain in many cities that are at this stage which Encinitas finds itself is that the individuals who experience homelessness in the area simply do not want or will not partake in services, so the current approach isn't working." The CRC has expanded its original mission of support for victims of domestic abuse to catering to the homeless who have decided to live on our streets, parks, and beaches. Unfortunately, though, through its expanded programs, CRC has become an attractive nuisance, now a center for food service, drawing in lines of people. Businesses have left Second Street because their concerns regarding safety and denigration of their properties were not being heard. I can't finish this all up in nine seconds. I sent it to you. It's in writing in your packet. Please finish reading it because it also tells why we have the city of Encinitas as our title and why we did that, because it's the jewel and the center of our historic city. We voted it in. Please give your tax-paying residents and visiting tourists your consideration for their health and safety during this discussion. Encinitas is fortunate to have a population of smart, creative people who are willing to help out.
Okay, thank you.[1212.79][1212.79][applause]
I'm Felicia Weinbaum, and I live in Cardiff. And I want to thank everyone. I want to thank the City Council and everyone for their service and their time and this, to be stewards of our city and our city resources, which are so precious, and also addressing emerging issues related to our public safety. So first of all, I just want to say that it's fair to assert that most people care about others. I mean, we're all caring people, and the CRC, I've said, you know, many times, you know, they are doing a service which is honorable. Okay? Homelessness, homelessness, addiction, it's an unjust problem in our society, and the stratified governmental attempts, attempts to resolve it have failed. So I just want to make one point after hearing everyone talk. I'm one of those people that walk downtown, well, used to walk downtown, and I don't anymore because I don't feel safe. And I've seen lots of things, like you have seen, the gentleman that spoke from the Rock Garden. It's kind of disturbing. Anyway, that is what it is. Okay, so I'm going to be pretty brief. I just want to talk about identity. So there's a lot of talk about identity today, and the city, citizens of Encinitas need to consider what their identity is. Are we surfers, skaters, beautiful sunsets, great schools? Do we want to add a North County Homeless, homelessness services center to that identity? I don't know. I mean, what does the majority of Encinitas want? And I think that's really at the core of what we're discussing. I haven't dug into, because I'm a working professional, I haven't dug into all the numbers, but I will. But what impact would all that identity have on tourism, local businesses, and public safety? And also, what about the downtown-specific plan? So the picture I gave you guys is an example. I am a Realtor, and these are some photos I took from a property. That had nothing to do, by the way, from this meeting tonight. I just took them because I was really appalled. The pictures that the City Council has are some photos I took from a home in the Little Italy area, and they're outside of a window, and it's just a bunch of trash and tents. And apparently, it was an elderly couple who wanted to move to be closer to their grandchildren. They've had this property for quite a while, and guess what? They're not moving. It's not sellable. So there's lots of sides to this story, and so I just urge you guys to, to think about all sides. Thanks.[1404.04][1404.04][applause]
Hi, I'm David Weinbaum, also a resident of Cardiff. Good evening, Mayor and Council and Staff. There's a lot of talk about data, and that's a big part of this because we're talking about spending a lot of money on a regional issue, but we're spending Encinitas money. And we have to really make sure that we really know the scope of homelessness in Encinitas because that's what we're talking about, not the regional part, but Encinitas. And so we have to really look at the data, and is our data valid and good? And I really don't think so because it doesn't jibe when you look at all the different sources. First off, there was the COPS Hope Team's outreach, and it shows for Q1 of 2025, there were 43 misdemeanors, three felonies, and 29 cleanup operations throughout the, the city. And then also in that same thing, it shows there were three drunken public citations and one open container citation. I find that completely hard to believe because anytime you walk by the Swami's Underpass, there's at least four guys drinking out of open containers, drunk and harassing people. It's gone on for months and months, and it just happens. We need enforcement, tough love, 100%. Because when you look at the numbers, you think of the point-in-time count and how it ups and downs. It's taken in January. January is prime time to be homeless in San Diego, so we might have more homeless in, in January. Why isn't it taken quarterly? So we know what it's like in August. That's really important. Then you look at the safe parking lot. Only 21% of the people that used it were residents of Encinitas. Everybody else came from somewhere else. So in what's nice, though, some of them moved into permanent residency, but are we tracking what happens afterwards? Do we know what the follow-up numbers are? We don't. It was evident today, when you guys talked about what you do, there's really incomplete collection of data to make a valid determination on how to spend millions of dollars, of our tax-paying dollars. It's important. So we need to understand that, but we also have to look at the success stories, the people that did return to permanent housing. What was the makeup of those people? How did they differ to the ones that didn't, the ones that left and returned homeless? We have to concentrate our resources on those people that really want to make a change. The people that don't, and they just want to come here to absorb the free food and so forth, we don't want those people here, so we have to go back to enforcement. We need to really strongly enforce the law, and that's about camping, that's about drinking, you know, all of the stuff that we're supposed to be enforcing and not allowing, it's allowed free will. And I'll run real quick. It used to be a point in time where the cop would take you to the edge of town and say, "Don't come back." We need to go back to that.
Thank you.[1609.04][1609.04][applause]
Lupita, Lupita Barnett, followed by Rachel Graves, Bob Iyers, with a time donation from Sunny Alshama. Sunny, are you here?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then Arturo Vasquez with time donation from Teresa Bochamp. Teresa, where were you? There you are. And Lois Sunrich. There you are. Thank you.
Good evening, Council members and Mayor. Your presence today reflected through a heart of Encinitas, a city that leads with compassion and invests in what matters the most, our kids, our neighbors, and our shared future. I'm Lupita Barnett, and I'm a community liaison for the Encinitas Union School District. I, every day, connect with families and students, listening to their dreams, their struggles, and their incredible resilience. Encinitas is a place that feels like home, but for some families, that sense of safety is fragile, taken by job loss, medical emergencies, or rising rents. I've met women with childrens that are living in their cars, not because they gave up, but because they are, they had the courage to leave a, in a, in a scape and abusive relationship. I've seen families rebuild after losing everything in fires, and I've spoken with newcomers eager to contribute to our community and belong. One student recently told me that he wants to learn math. This is elementary school. So he can work at Walmart, so he can help his family to get his home, because right now he's living in the living room, in a shared home. He's just a child, and he already has to carry a dog, whereas the new child should bear. This is why the Community Resource Center is so vital. It's not just a building, it's a foundation. It offers more than meals or shelters. It restores hope. It helps parents find works, secure housing, and rebuild their life with dignity. But families facing homelessness, they need more than good intentions. They need like a housing navigator, someone who can, they can talk to them, and they can walk beside them, helping them to find real solutions. This role means faster access to stability and more families staying rooted in our school and our neighborhoods. Let's build the path to those safe, joyful homes for our childrens. By supporting this role in this budget is not just founding a position. You're opening doors to bright future and sending a powerful message. Everyone deserves a place to call home. Thank you.[1778.04][1778.04][applause]
Rachel Graves. Thank you for addressing this critical issue tonight. It is clear that doing things the way they've always been done has exacerbated the homelessness crisis. Your constituents elected you to be forward-thinking leaders, not caretakers of Your constituents elected you to be forward-thinking leaders, not caretakers of outdated systems. The point-in-time count system is antiquated and unreliable, often underestimating homelessness by significant margins. Studies have revealed the true scale could be over 10 times greater. Our 2024 head secretary, Marsha Fudge, said it herself. "It doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense, but that's what has always historically been done, and we just continue to do it the way it's always been done," unquote. Homelessness is fluid, and a single night's count fails to capture dynamic realities. As such, I would please ask you to disregard the conclusion made by Ms. Dacey tonight. I do not think this point-in-time count gives us a conclusion that we're making progress. And to Councilmember San Antonio's question, if cities can do more than this, they do do more than this. In fact, in the county of LA, Long Beach, Glendale, and Pasadena do their own counting of homelessness. And in the county of San Diego, as I'm sure know, El Cajon and Chula Vista do their own counts. Organizations that are conducting these counts often have conflicts of interest due to funding ties undermining the objectivity. It is your duty to formulate policies, not motivated by political narratives, but instead rooted in reality. Clearly, the habit's failing. I do not think I need to go into detail about the things we've seen recently, but it is evidenced by worsening conditions observed by our residents, our visitors, our businesses, our hospitals, and our public officials. I just wanted to make a note to you, it's probably more for Jennifer Campbell, but our homeless services manager that we had had hundreds of reports. He prioritized every one of them as a medium. I would please ask our city manager to hire someone who is on the same page as Encinitas. We do not think people laying in the street drunk, drugs, naked masturbating is a medium. They're high priority things on that list. Medium's not okay. I urge you to adopt continuous, transparent data collection methods to replace our point-in-town time count. Any organization that partners with the city should be willing participants in a robust data system. Future councils need to have reliable data to address homelessness effectively. Thank you for considering innovative solutions and fulfilling the trust placed in you by your community. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Bob Ayers, Encinitas resident. I fully support staff's recommendations. It does indeed meet the general plan Housing Element Policy 1.7, which I'm sure you all read in detail. Anyone paying attention would agree that most of your election's success recently was a result of your promise to stop unpopular housing projects. You shout "Fight the state." You shout "Local control" to build a fence around our city to keep people out. Well, there's one group that you cannot keep out. No restrictive, privilege-based zoning laws, no number of Prop 8s will keep people who are poor or ill from living on our city streets. You can keep many from buying or renting here, but you cannot keep the homeless from living here. It's a growing problem that one city council, no matter the false promises or bravado, can stop. Fortunately, we have a professional staff that is ready to deal with reality. They have a plan right now to manage homelessness. The homelessness action plan before you is a plan that is proven to work in other cities to get people into shelters. They didn't make it up. It's not a bunch of wishes and catchy election slogans. I want to be really clear about something with which I think we all agree. If someone in our city is breaking a law, that person should be arrested, whether that person is homeless or not. The conundrum we all face is that the arrests lead to nothing permanent. We do not have the facilities to treat or even incarcerate the growing number of people suffering in this way. The best solution to end homelessness is to find everyone a home. You can make arrests all day long, you can treat addiction and mental illness all day long, but if someone does not have a place to sleep that is safe, their problems will persist, and that is why Housing First is the key. Yes, there are some people that resist. Again, I think we can all agree that those who resist assistance are the ones causing us the most problem. They're the ones causing everybody in this room to get tangled up. It's a relatively small group in Encinitas. Our chief says it's about 10 to 15 people that's causing all the problem, and it's the hardest group to help. What is not helping is lumping this small troublesome group into a much larger, more diverse group of treatable people without homes. Grouping them together is not helping. Shamelessly photographing and displaying them online is not helping. Getting our rifles and comparing housing decisions to the Holocaust is not helping. Spending hours in this room wishing and scheming and blaming is not helping. Conflating the homeless action plan with the CRC's construction plan is not helping. We have tools that help. Please support the tools we have. We have regional and local resources that our staff is recommending we use. We need to hire some folks. We have organizations like the CRC, She Wish Family Services, and more, who are dedicated to working on this issue. Support them, don't fight them. Our staff created a plan that fits into our resources. It is supported by the experts in the field. Several are here tonight supporting this plan. Coming up with your own plan puts us all at risk. It is not helping. Don't do it. Thank you.
Arturo Vasquez will be followed by Marco Gonzalez, Julie Thunder, and then Christine Schindler.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and family, community residents. My name is Arturo Vasquez, and I've been a proud resident of Encinitas for the past 15 years. It is with a sense of humility, compassion, and responsibility I'm here tonight and have a deep, authentic conversations about the challenges and issues facing our city, especially when it comes to homelessness and affordable housing. I know how complex these topics are, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective. For over a decade, I've dedicated my career in working with socially impacted communities with a strong focus on affordable housing, education, and social services. My experience includes serving previously as resident services staff with community housing work, a leading organization in the field of affordable housing across the state. Through this work, I've seen firsthand how vital collaborative partnerships with county, city, and local nonprofit organizations are truly making a difference. Tonight, I want to emphasize two crucial elements for a truly effective and compassionate homeless action plan here in Encinitas. First, the city needs a robust staff infrastructure to achieve our shared goal for reaching functional zero homelessness, a status that cities like Orlando Beach, Bakersfield, and Kern County have made significant progress towards. I review the staff report, and while I appreciate the two RFPs for case manager and community outreach social worker, I believe we are missing a critical piece: a dedicated housing navigator. In the past, organizations like Community Resource Center, through their Opening Doors program, provided invaluable housing navigation experience. The complexities of connecting unhoused neighbors to the most appropriate housing options demand the expertise of full-time social workers, especially focused on housing. I've observed a concerning trend as well, the lack of cities' homeless staffing compared to neighborhoods like Carlsbad. Encinitas currently has all homeless-related positions empty. We recently saw resignations such as Stephen Gonzalez, an invaluable homeless solutions manager, and Christian Gutierrez, former housing manager, who is now Housing Services Manager at the City of Carlsbad. Even Nicole Piana-Jones, who provided crucial affordable housing education to residents, has moved to the Carlsbad Homelessness Services Department. This partner suggests that our frontline staff of addressing homelessness and affordable housing are simply not receiving the adequate support and resources they need here in Encinitas, leading them to seek a more robust environment elsewhere. We must invest in a well-staffed department to provide the consistent, expert support our community deserves. Second, it is paramount that we strengthen our collaborative partnerships between city and Encinitas and local nonprofit organizations that possess deep expertise in homelessness management, such as the Community Resource Center. The staff report on page two strongly recommends this, and I wholeheartedly concurred as well. These organizations have on-the-ground experience, established trust with the community, and the specific skill set needed to effectively implement the Homeless Action Plan. By working hand-in-hand with these proven partners, we can leverage their established networks and specialized services, avoiding duplication of efforts and ensuring that our resources are allocated more effectively and compassionately. Investing in a robust city staff, fostering strong collaborative partnership are not just about spending money, they're about investing in the well-being of the entire community. They are about creating framework that moves us from addressing symptoms to achieving sustainable solutions, solutions that reflect the compassionate values we hold dear to the Encinitas residents. So I encourage you to work together and build an impactful and humane homelessness action plan for our city. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Marco Gonzalez with Coast Law Group. I want to dispel something right out the gate. I think Councilmember Schaefer and commenter Natalie Satun mentioned this $24 billion figure, that this is money that's lost at the state, as though they don't know where it went. That's not the case. They know where it went. The difficulty pointed out by the state auditor is that it's hard to identify what benefits were derived from such large expenditures. And while we can look at that and say, "Well, that's because the programs suck, and there's no accountability, and no one's paying attention," but the reality is, it's a reflection of just how big a problem the state is dealing with, and how hard it is to triage the obscene numbers of people who are becoming homeless while you're trying to, you know, reduce those numbers. And the reality is, the microcosm of that is happening right now in Encinitas. We have people who are getting up here and saying, "The Homeless Action Plan doesn't work because we aren't seeing a dramatic reduction in numbers." But we can't say conclusively how many people are being kept out of homelessness because of the work of the city and of folks like at the CRC. Instead, what we have in our city is horribly transparent audacity. The audacity of some people to extrapolate their anecdotes and presume that every person suffering from homelessness is masturbating on a street corner. The audacity of people to come here with hyperbole and talk about every time they go into the Swami's underpassers, four drunk people hanging out. No, that's not true. I ride my bike under there multiple times per week. The people who come before you with the audacity to say that the only way we can solve this problem is by enforcement first, when every credible study done shows that it's housing first, housing with services that actually moves the needle. Every day, I leave my office in downtown Encinitas, and I either ride my bike underneath the Swami's underpass, or I drive my car down Second Street in front of CRC. I even sometimes see Natalie driving her car in front of me down the street, looking for homelessness, and I'm looking for the same thing. But you know what? Most of the time, we just don't see it. And while those of us who are downtown see it a lot more than others, I've been in my office since 2009, and our end of town was the part where homelessness was most realized, largely because of the services that were being provided then by SRF. And the hippies just liked to congregate down there, and a lot of those guys were homeless. We see it, but it's not devastating our property taxes. It's not the reason why we have vacancy in our retail establishments downtown. It's a bona fide problem, but it's a problem of housing, and it's a problem of lack of services. It's not a problem that will be fixed by issuing citations. That being said, I'm just going to leave with this strangeness that I find with this notion that if the Homeless Action Plan isn't working, we should just throw it out. Let's fix it. Let's provide more compassionate services for people. Let's make a difference in their lives. Thank you.
Julie Thunder, followed by Christine Schindler, Trish Walsh, and then Malia Bolin.
Thank you. Julie Thunder, Cardiff. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Looking through the packet, I noticed a lot of letters that were sent to you, a lot of emails, and I caught something. Over of 120, more than 120 emails that were sent to you, that was this morning. Over 60 of them were sent from this political action committee, Encinitas Action, which is owned by one of your speakers tonight. Next page, please. Oh, okay. It says Bob.
Tell you what, let's just have the public comments.
Thank you. Can I have the time back? Sorry. A few more seconds, please.
Go ahead.
Anyway, so this is, it shows that they registered as a political action committee this past April. Next page, please. Their social media runs under the name Encinitas for All. So when you see Encinitas Action, I just want you to know that they're also, that they're the same as Encinitas for All and vice versa. Next page, please. They claim to be nonpartisan, but they take positions on issues that are clearly partisan. Next page, please. Encinitas Action has asked their followers several times to email City Council and provide a link to automate that process, which they did for tonight's meeting. When you click on the link, you can see your email will be sent to council@encinitasaction.org. This is not you guys. Next page, please. Council@encinitasaction.org. On first glance, I'm sure many of the people that submitted an email to you through that thought they were sending it to City Council. This is not a City of Encinitas email address and doesn't go to any of you. Instead, all of those 65-plus emails went to the Political Action Committee, Encinitas Action. Next page, please. Did Encinitas Action alter any of the emails before sending them to you? Did Encinitas Action filter any emails that they don't agree with and neglect to send them to you? Did the city clerk inadvertently or advertently alert you that at least half of all emails received tonight are from the same source? Next page. Is it wrong for a PAC to email people about the Homeless Action Plan? Of course not. But it's wrong to call yourself nonpartisan while quietly building a political machine to oppose our current council majority. And it's wrong to deceive the public by insinuating their emails will be sent directly to City Council. Thank you.
So Christine Schindler, I live in East Encinitas. Was not planning on speaking tonight. I sent in my written comments on Monday, and I thought that would suffice. However, I was a bit surprised by the earlier conversation, kind of the lack of being informed about the point-in-time homeless count. So if nothing else, I missed part of the speakers, so I don't know everything that was said. I was over with Youth Commission, talking about bike and walk safety. I have done the homeless count many times. I did it originally in City Heights, where they have a very large homelessness issue, a lot of it having to be close to downtown, a lot of it because they have a lot of canyons. It is very well organized. It is uniform across the region. It's done once a year because there's quite a bit involved in it. I've never heard them talk about being able to do it quarterly, probably because of funding. I've also done it here in Encinitas, and it's not an end-all-be-all, it's just a shot-in-time, an idea of what exists. I think in San Diego... I think in San Diego, because of our weather situation, it really doesn't matter what time of the year you do it. I look to our council to have caring, to be thoughtful, and to take some action. I heard Brad's remarks. He was our first speaker. I totally agree with everything he said. It was very well spoken. I had to leave midway into John's remarks. However, in the past, I've heard him speak many times. He's very informed. He knows what kind of action needs to be taken, and he is highly motivated to make sustaining changes in our community, and I respect that. You know, a couple of the speakers also spoke to the fact that housing first is so important, so for homeless individuals, and I could be one in the future. Senior housing is very difficult, very expensive. I was pushed out of Solana Beach, and I could easily be pushed out of Encinitas. Knock on wood, I'm thankful for my home. It is all about housing first. I mean, we have people with physical, mental health issues. We have people with job sustainability, income issues, and I don't see any of that currently getting better. And there's going to be seniors that are not able to sustain, and we have a younger segment in our community as well that may not be able to sustain their housing. Thanks for your action.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Bruce and City Council members. My name is Trish Walsh, and I'm seven years old, and I have lived in Carter for over 40 years. I have worked at Bliss 101 in downtown Encinitas for over 10 years. I have become afraid and feel unsafe to work alone in the store any longer due to being afraid of getting attacked verbally and physically. These are just some of my encounters with homeless, drug-induced, mentally ill people who I know wander over from the CRC Center while I'm working. I have seen many over there hanging around. I could not open the store one morning because a homeless drunk guy literally was passed out on the ground blocking my front door. I had to call 911. They took a while to get there. We had a couple for a long time sleeping on our cardboard boxes right out behind our back door, and went to the bathroom back there and left a mess always. We had to call in help to get rid of them. When the stone bench was out front of our store, I saw a homeless young guy light himself on fire while smoking crack. Numerous homeless, drug, mentally ill people sitting on those benches, always causing a scene or harassing us and our customers. We asked the city to take the bench out and was happy that they did. Thank you. I could stand here for hours discussing my negative, scary experiences with homeless, drug-induced, mentally ill people while working in Encinitas. With the new expansion of the CRC, I firmly believe this out-of-control situation will only get drastically worse. I am a compassionate person, and I know some people and families do benefit from the services at the CRC. But does it really need to be located in the heart of downtown Encinitas, where a lot of us work? I have seen more willies than I should have to see on our sidewalks. I have walked around more homeless, drug, or alcohol-induced people laid out flat in the middle of our sidewalks. Please vote no on the CRC expansion. It will only, pardon my pun, feed the monster that is destroying our city. We tax-paying citizens deserve to feel safe here while working or going out in Encinitas. Thank you for your time.
Following Malia is Maria Ardance.
Good evening. My name's Malia Bolin. I am a downtown business owner. I actually own Bliss 101, where Trish was speaking about. I'm kind of piggybacking on what she said and some of the experiences that we've had that not only make myself feel unsafe, but the many girls who work for me and often work alone. As she said, having drunk and passed out homeless people behind our door, at our front door, passed out in the sidewalk, having to clean up human feces, having homeless and very under the influence people walk in and approach the girls that work for me in a very aggressive manner and not leave them alone, doesn't really give them the opportunity to call anybody for help. I've given them as many tools as I can legally to try and help keep them safe, but this happens on a daily, weekly basis. Just yesterday, we had a gentleman walk in I'd never seen before, and he was obviously very dazed and confused and under the influence, and a very large man who cornered both of us behind the desk and wouldn't let us come out for three or four minutes. And it's very, very intimidating. It's very scary. These girls work at night during the winter when it gets dark, and they have to walk to their cars, and these people are in the parking lot, and they're screaming profanities at them, near them, at each other, fighting behind our back door, sleeping behind our back door, to where they can't even open our back door to leave. So I'm not here to judge anybody. I think there's been a great amount of, just great ideas that have been passed around. You know, I hope those will all be taken to heart. My biggest concern is the safety of my business, my girls, myself, and anybody who patronizes my business. And I've seen a lot of those people turn away when they see the homeless coming in that direction, and they're screaming at people that are eating outside, and they're yelling at customers passing by, and they just keep on walking to the other side of the street. So yes, I'll say it's hurt business, and you know, that concerns me a lot, but safety definitely concerns me the most. And you know, we do call the sheriff. We've called them multiple times. We've made many reports. A lot of times, it's a 30-minute hold time. If it's not, it takes a while for them to get there. I understand they're busy. It doesn't do a whole lot for us to call the Sheriff's Department, unfortunately. So I hope that you can take some of these great ideas and make some changes in downtown Encinitas. Thank you so much.
So item three of the HAP focus is to ensure the safety and welfare of individuals experiencing homeless residents and businesses. This is the crux of the frustration for most of the residents of the city. Services for those who need and want help during a time of temporary homelessness is not the issue. The issue is the lack of enforcement of laws to combat the dangerous behaviors that we see from chronic homeless population in the city. Those individuals who don't want the help, the ones who many of us have seen shooting up in the street, not anecdotally, masturbating in public, urinating, defecating in public, physically attacking residents and business employees alike, setting fires, like I've said before, this is not okay. This is not okay for anyone in the city. And it feels like item three of the HAP has been completely overlooked by the previous council. I'm asking that, yes, tough love or tough enforcement, whatever you want to call it, that approach is taken by this council. You cannot expect drug addicts and mentally ill individuals to just magically heal on their own. They're not going to wake up one day and get the help that they do desperately need. And you can't in good conscience just place them into residential neighborhoods where they're going to be a threat to themselves or others. They need to be held accountable to treatment and recovery, and none of that is easy. I mean, you've had many speakers talk about that. It is complicated. This is not an easy issue. My hope, and I'm kind of going off on a rail here, I mean, there's so many alternative therapy treatments that become so much more effective for people who struggle with mental illness battles. Like, how do we get to those treatments? I don't know if we get through, like, what programs we get to. Recently, there was an article in the Coast News about John Van Clef receiving alternative treatments, like TMS. Those treatments work. How can we partner with groups to get people who need these treatments, the treatment they need? Because we do need to get them treatment, but we can't let them live on the street doing these things that shouldn't be happening in public. It's just not the answer. It's not compassion. And like I said, it's not easy, but we need to also isolate. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach. Are these vets? We have so many programs, especially in San Diego, to help homeless veterans. Let's partner with them. Are they drug addicts and/or mentally ill? We have to get tailored approaches. This is not an easy solution. It's a huge thing, and I don't know if we alone can do it, but if we anecdotally only have these 10 or 12 people, maybe there's some kind of, like, test case we can do to try out some of these things, like TMS or frequency-specific microcurrents. There are other ways to help people get treatment that will maybe actually heal them, because locking up doesn't do it all. That's not going to solve anything. They need treatment. I agree with that. As far as CRC, we do need people who support the women and children who are fleeing domestic violence. I've had to save my sister from it, and not everybody has a little sister who can do that. But what these...
You can wrap up.
I will, I will. But what these women fleeing from abuse don't need is being afraid and threatened by drug-induced and mentally ill. So I just think that needs to be separate as well.
And then, Mayor, that does conclude speakers, and then we had five individuals that registered support but did not wish to speak.
Okay. So I think, before we go to a break, I want to make sure we all are reminded what's in the report and what is the recommended action, and I'm going to read it so we're all on the same page. Receive a report and status update regarding the implementation of the Homeless Action Plan and provide direction to staff, so the councils to provide direction to staff regarding any amendments to the HAP goals and activities. So that's what we'll do when we get back. We'll take a break for, if we can do it in 12 minutes, I'd love it, but it'd probably be closer to 15. So back here and try and get here back by 10 till. So back here and try and get here back by 10 till. Dead air. That's what this is. Lucky, the video feed is paused. Wow, such a quiet group. Hit the gavel again when you're ready. Okay. So we'll come back into session. And I'm going to speak first. I already said what the purpose is tonight. I'm wondering if you could put up the goals. Maybe page two, or if you have the goals. Or page two. I think they're on page two. And I am going to start with some higher-level discussion. And it was interesting, the public comments. I actually really enjoyed all sides of the public comments because I heard like Brad Lefkowitz say that no one in this room opposes enforcing the law. Then he went on to say, I support it. I love that. I heard that from quite a few people. Others said almost the same thing. And when I looked through the three goals, they talked about treating the homelessness and the homeless and the people, the people that are suffering from homeless. But in no place did I see the safety of the general public or the enforcement of laws. And so at a very high level, my goal tonight would be to recommend to the rest of my council members that we add a fourth goal. And I'm not looking to rip this up and throw it away because I think some of these-- many of the programs, if not all the programs, have proven of some value. But I would add a fourth goal. And it would have to do with enforcing our laws only against those breaking the law. And the video reminded me of John Van Cleef's discussion about even the CRC has to enforce occasionally. And the city should have the same right and same right and duty to-- in fact, we have a greater duty because we're charged with public safety. And I can't tell you the number of times that I've felt threatened. I'm a big guy. And every time that happens, I think, what would my wife think? What would my three daughters think? What position would they be in? And it's pretty intimidating. And so my high-level fourth goal. Let's see, what else was I going to go into? Well, tell you what, I'm going to stop at that and then I'm going to let the rest of the-- but my goal tonight is to-- the goal of the meeting is to give direction to staff. And I have a whole list of lower-level edits, but just at the highest level, I'm going to keep it to that. And I'll yield at this point and go to Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. Another goal is to get out of here before midnight. Or ideally, whatever, whatever time. So I like adding a fourth goal. I would like-- if we were going to keep any of this stuff, I'd like to give metrics to it for a yearly update so that we're no longer-- because again, the goals are the goals. But one of the citizens had written in about a SMARCA. And in case you don't know what SMARCA's are, it's a specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. So if we don't have any of those metrics, we really were kind of muttering in the waters where Scott Campbell did a great job of showing that we're still well above the 10-year average, even, you know, four years deep. And COVID's in there and all kinds of craziness. So we should be able to give those metrics. This is going to-- this is my first crack at it right now. But before we go on, I really want to put out-- I think there's a compassionate-- I read something about compassion. And I think there's two very different groups. And Maria said that we don't want to lump everybody into homelessness in the one group. But there's a very specific group that everybody is aware of. That's the main one, I think, that is really talked about. There's a whole nother group that is being, you know, very well taken care of through the compassionate side of the Insanidian resident. The affordable housing crisis, a big part of it was the Housing First model. And a big part of the ADU and the SB9 and all that stuff was to help people find housing for those individuals that are experiencing homelessness. So I'd like to put together or put forward a separate motion upfront to open up a sign-up sheet for residents. We can put a time limit on it. We can put it open-ended. But for residents in Insininas that want to house somebody who's experiencing homelessness and be a part of that service, that can be opened up to our city manager or to our new Homeless Action Coordinator to be able to help those who want to, you know, just got into homelessness or whatever, that needs a better place to live, that somebody's got an affordable ADU, they really don't need the extra income, but they want to help out. Like, let's put a sign-up sheet. I think that if we give it to Labor Day to review it at that point and see what kind of response we've gotten and we can kind of go back through. But let's give the compassionate people of Insininas a chance to put up. You know, we talked a lot, but talk's cheap. And it's time to start doing something about it. And so there's-- I think there's a number of people that would be willing to do that. And it's not-- again, I don't think it's the main individuals that I think that a lot of the outrage in town right now is about. I think it's all the other people that just need a couple of months to get some income under their belt and back to or whatever. But again, our District Four council member has done-- unbeknownst to himself, has hired this somebody and has since received services because of the conversation he had here is a classic example that nobody knew about this person. He got a job on his own while experiencing homelessness and is now getting to a housed situation and still doing great things for Marco. And so let's try to see if we can do more of that. So I think I would put a motion forward for it. I think it could be open-ended. But I think let's give ourselves like to the end of summer for a review of how that's looking and how that's working and if we're seeing any advantages to it. So I'll leave it there for a second.
Okay. Deputy Mayor lines?
Yeah, let me just jump right in and hit a few things that I'd like to share. Thanks for all the great input. I was really, really happy to hear all sides of the story and the broad range of concerns and also support for some things that have already started and are going well. I wanted to start by saying that we aren't voting on the CRC expansion. And they have a right to expand. So I'm just making the statement that this is not what we-- we will not conflate those issues here. What we are voting on is the Homeless Action Plan. One of the things I want to call out is our skilled staff. And they're sitting right over there. Well, everyone. In that I was happy with the way we've moved this Homeless Action Plan forward. And it is a very smart plan. I think we've got some really-- I just want to call it out because this is how I see it, guys. We've got some real good skill over there at understanding solutions for homelessness. And maybe some of it, you've been learning through this process. I don't know. But you continue to impress me on your ability to grasp the challenges and then also do the coordination and expand in areas that we haven't dealt with before. This is all new, starting in 2021. So I just want to call that out. We've got a lot ahead of us, too. We've just really started this honest dialogue. And so it's really a wonderful opportunity to say, hey, let's look in the mirror and let's figure out how to take it forward. And I'm hearing everyone say, yeah, this is a start. Let's continue to have solutions. And this is our opportunity to tweak things. I think what we need to aim for as far as best practices are effective and funded programs. We want to make sure we continue with our outreach. And we want to provide services. We need to make sure the gaps are covered. And some of the gaps might be simple things like transportation, getting people to where they need to go for their services. And sometimes, simple things like that can be a gap that needs to be addressed. I'd like to make sure we're looking at where those gaps are. We need it to be compassionate and accountable. And when I-- let me see. I like the focus on the three goals. I don't mind adding a fourth goal, which would be to track enforcement associated with homelessness. I think we do, but through the HOPE program. But I think it might be a little bit buried in the narrative here, and it might not-- and perhaps it needs to be looked at for what we are reporting. But as I read this report, I see that the HOPE team has served 203 individuals. It housed 83 people, which are-- and 56 of those were unduplicated people to the Buena Creek Navigation Center. 44 exited and 13 went to permanent housing. And so I see some of that in there. But maybe it's just not popping out as clear as we would like when we start looking at from the perspective of enforcement. That's only one bit of enforcement, the HOPE team. And there's probably others that we could also track in relationship. The one goal that I don't think we're hitting hard enough yet is Goal Three, which is increased availability of temporary and permanent housing. I find it hard to find a successful story around that, what we've done successfully. I also am worried that we have even less resources today than we've had over this past year. I hear that we're committed to filling the vacancy for the Housing Solution Manager, so I definitely support that. I hear that we are supporting the Outreach Case Management, which will be through the consultant, which will bring on two people, which I support. I do feel like we really have a gap where it has to do with the housing navigation. And we used to have that covered through our opening doors-- opening doors-- I think I have that right-- opening doors program. And when that was no longer funded, we took that service in-house to do by our staff. And now we no longer have that staff member who did that service. So sometimes, these things just fall off the radar. And now we don't have anyone, whether it's a service entity or staff, who's handling the housing navigation. it's a service entity or staff, who's handling the housing navigation. And as many of our speakers said, that's a missing piece. We continue to support the HOPE team and I want to continue to support the HOPE team, the CRC and their services, the Buena Creek Navigation Center, the Jewish Family Services, and also the PATHA Social Worker. I support the continuing of that and that's contracted through the county. I support the ongoing onboarding of the HMIS program, which is the database, which is the by-name program. And I know our staff has begun to figure out, we just got that, access to that a few months ago, so our staff is working hard to figure out how to best use that information. So I look forward to ongoing success there so we know what the challenges are with each of the individuals we're, we're dealing with. Those are just a few things I wanted to point out. I heard people say, we're not doing enough. I heard people say, let's set the bar higher. Let's do more. Let's get more metrics. Let's really know what we're talking about. Let's make it measurable. I support Councilmember Schaefer's recommendation for the SMARCA goals and I support his recommendation for the list to house homeless folks. And I just want to conclude by saying, we've just started. We just had, we just finalized the plan, the HAP, in 2021. Jewish Family Services just came in within a year from that. And then we, in 2023, were able to hire the Housing Solutions Manager. And then in 2024, we were able to contract with the City of Vista for the Buena Creek Navigation Center. I think these are good milestones each year and I really want to support us continuing to move from success to success. And I do want to finally conclude by saying, I think this city council does want to be part of the solution and we all, I think we all want to say that we're reducing homelessness under our oversight. So I think if we can get to the point where every year we say, this metric was good, this was good, maybe this one not so good, how can we fix that? I think we're doing the right thing.
Councilmember San Antonio.
Let me start by saying that I, I do, thank you for that. I mean, I know it's a lot of work. I know it's, you put your hearts into it. I, from listening to the, the speakers today on both sides, I, you guys all, everybody presented something unique and made a lot of the same, but very unique points of view. I agree with a lot of it. I mean, clearly we, we're all here and we, we want to help, right? I don't think, you know, not, not one of us up here is, is like, well, I'm just going to move them out of here. That's, is that the goal? Well, would we like to see less? Of course. Who doesn't? Who want, who wants their, their employees? Who wants their daughters, their wives to be out at, you know, at work or walking, you know, their kids on the street and feel unsafe? This is our, this is our town. It's not mine. It's not these guys. It's, it's ours, everybody's. To what Maria said, you know, we, we aren't, maybe not even what Maria said, what, somebody, somebody said, we're not taking pictures of the moms who left their abused relationships. We're not taking pictures of that. We're taking care, we're taking pictures of the, you know, the 10 to 15 people that seem to keep coming up. So is, is that in our, in the forefront? Yeah, 100% is in the forefront. But I also see that the good work that the CRC does do, I mean, it's not just, and I know we're not talking about the CRC and the expansion, but it's not just the, the work that you guys are doing to help feed, feed the unhoused, but it's the, the actual work that you do to feed the, you know, Chris uses a, uses the service who works for me. He also got, I got him another job. He got a second job at, at an Italian restaurant, Lucadia. So he's, he's, he's moving up. He's, he's making some moves. So I'm very happy for that. I'm, I'm happy that I, unbeknownst to me, was able to give him a little step up and he took, he took that ball and is rolling with it. So you clearly see that it is a very, it's that, you know, if, if that's what it is, it's just a step up and, oh man, somebody help me. I got that little bit of grasp and I can pull myself up even further? Perfect. That's what we want, right? That's what we want for the homeless or unhoused. That's what we want for these people that we see and they definitely need the help. But it's those people that are in the forefront that we see on socials, that we see in the streets and that we see, you know, people are definitely scared to be here and I'll, you know, or not to be here, but to be, you know, they feel unsafe in our city. And the, the job of us up here and, and the staff is to keep the city safe and to, to continue that, not just one lawyer up here, but to hand it down to the next, the next council, whoever that may be, years from now, years and years from now. Just kidding. Sorry, I'm a little bit long-winded right now, but let's see, Scott Campbell, I, I definitely liked his, his call-out for metrics. I mean, I, if you just say, oh, we want to do more or we want something to be better, I mean, that's not really how you measure something. If you want an A, you got to get 90% or above. It's like there's a, a number associated with it. So even if we don't reach that goal, like you said, there's a number that we're trying to reach and whether we reach it or not, we know that that's the number, not just more, five, sure, it's more, but should we set the bar higher? Maybe. I, we all want what's best for this town. There's, there's another, there's another program called the San Diego Rescue Mission. It seems like they, and that, you know, they've got three locations, but you should look it up. It seems like they've got a pretty good track record for getting people off the street, getting people housed, getting people jobs, getting people sober. And I believe it was, shoot, I wish I could remember in my notes who, who said that, but if sobriety is the, one of the main causes or, or one of the things that will keep them from the recidivity rate coming, coming back, I think that that is something that should definitely be looked at, this program, just because I, obviously it's a, it's a, whatever the program is, is, it's lengthy, it's, it's in-depth, but let's just see, let's see their, their numbers that, you know, that they've shown, let's see, in 2024, they have 95% of their alumni were still housed from, there's just so many, so many numbers that you could look at on their, even on their website. So I don't know what I'm saying about that, except for that it's a program that should definitely be looked at. Sorry, I wrote so many different notes while people were talking. You know, people have been saying, I've heard, some people say that we should build a homeless facility here. I mean, look, I mean, I, I think that sounds great. I think it's, 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 in this utopian world, doesn't sound great. I think it sounds wonderful, but you can see that we, our budget is so tight. I, the funding, I know there's grants, there's this, there's that, but our city staff, our city, our city budget is so stretched. We don't have the, I don't think we have the, the facility to, to, to make that happen in, in a larger scale that I think that we would probably need. So I don't know, I just thought that was a tough, a big ask or a big lift for our small city. You know, we have 63,000 people, that's, that's tough. Our tax base is not that big. I mean, we can't, nothing against the sheriffs, but we don't have the ability to have our own police force. We don't, you know, all these things we would, of course, love, but I don't know, I, I find it hard in, in my short time here to look forward and see, oh, that's totally possible. Let's make that happen. I, I think that if that's the route we're going to go, it's going to be hard work, hard, this, this forethought from our mayor and us and the people that come after us to make that happen, but it's a lot of planning, it's a lot of funding. I guess I'll, I'll yield for right now.
Okay. Councilmember O'Hara.
So just follow up on what my council members here said. You know, I, I fully support Mayor Eller's concept of adding a fourth item concerning public safety. And I think we need to establish a clear message to a population that we are service-driven first and we want to help you first. And that is our primary goal. We also have citizens who want to make sure that if you're not going to accept that help, this is not the place to be. And I think that's clear through our citizens. So I think we need to meet, meet both sides of that in some way. And I think Item Four could be a way to address that, figure out where the compassion in that line sits for our residents as well as our homeless population and our businesses, of course. I'm, I'm intrigued, you know, the state mandate loves ADUs and they are pushing them as a solution to homelessness. So I'm very intrigued by Councilmember Schaefer's idea to see what would happen, because their idea is everybody builds an ADU will solve homelessness. I, I think it's worth exploring. I think it's a really interesting concept to see if the population does indeed want to house the homeless in their backyard. Let's, let's get to work on something that might, might test that, test that theory and see what happens. I think it's worth a little shot. Councilmember Lines had some great follow-up and I thought she, you know, continuing with the, the gap, gap coverage and transportation, those are all important things that need to be in a homeless action plan going forward because I think that connectivity is big and it touches on some of the other pieces I'll touch on. I did notice that she mentioned staff, how staff has done such a great job on this because they are professionally skilled at this. I noticed Bob Ayers was up here. Bob Ayers said, we have a professional staff who is set up to do this and really good to go. I can go back and read the tape, whatever, but with respect. Melinda or Patty, are you homeless experts?
No, we are not homeless experts. Our degrees and primary experiences in planning and policy planning, we have learned along the way as planners always, we're kind of experts of none, but masters of a lot. But we have both had to fill in and learn this because it's become a big issue with the state.
And I, I and the rest of the council appreciate your hard work on this. I just wanted to make that clear. We do have an intention and I support this idea of hiring a homeless, homeless department manager and bringing on, I believe we talked about, a service that will provide us with two social outreach managers and I, I fully support that. I think that is yet to be determined though as far as this program goes and clearly that will be, that's where our specialty and our homeless experts will sit. I do, I was given questions about the Open Doors program and my, and my briefing as to questions as to whether it was actually successful or not. I don't want to dive into that. I think the concept is good. I think obviously it needs some help. And then I think, you know, I, I heard Councilmember San Antonio address building a shelter. Quite frankly, from a business standpoint, I don't know why anybody would build a shelter here. Our rents are eight, per Marco Gonzalez, who is in here, attorney, local attorney does real estate, our rents are $8 a square foot. That's why I don't warehouse my business here. I warehouse it in a place where rent is $3 a square foot. So I, I probably wouldn't support that in that aspect because I don't think it's a good business plan and I want our money to be used, every penny of it to be used the way I would use it on myself to serve our homeless people and get a good outcome. So I think that, that you'd have to show me that you can get that land really cheap and the building really cheap like you can on other places and I don't think you can. I'm all for this, I'm all for sheltering people. I think the idea we're going to build shelter, to your point, is an unrealistic concept if we want to do this well. Diving into the HAP itself, this thing is built off of data from four years ago.
Longer.
Longer. Nobody, nobody runs a business off of data from four years ago. There are holes up and down this and, and issues with data that, that doesn't stand. I mean, we could slice this, this point in time cup up into eight million different pieces and one point, one person said, oh, it went down. One person could say, oh, well, it's still the highest it's been in 10 years. Right? There's all sorts of ways to cut it up, to Farhad's point, he's not here tonight, of course, but to his point, the data is, interesting how data can be used like that, right? I, I do think Councilmember San Antonio had a great point that some sort of a backup plan to install, I mean, I, I'll ask staff, I guess, do we have the original number? Because so the way the, the point in time data happens is it's counted and then it gets sent to HUD and we get it like six weeks later, right? Or something, roughly. Right?
Yes.
Do we have access to that original data before HUD got it?
No, RTFH manages all the data submissions.
So I'm not sure what six, happens in six weeks that we need that done, but so, so the, the data is, is, is hard to, to base the decision off of. I think we have to, at some point, do what most people do, what, what does the eye test tell you? And that's part of what we're, we're looking at. What are the programs on here that are, that have been really impactful and helpful? You know, I think, I think we've had, we've seen some of these ones that give us great information. We, we supported the Jewish family parking lot and I'll support that going forward. I think it's a great tool for our people who need it. It helps our sheriff's department. We've, Buena Creek Navigation Center has been a great help in all of this and it's, you know, our path has, needs work, but it's certainly a useful tool. I, I'm, I'll soft pedal this back, but we're a team with the, with the county, with our nonprofits and with our, with our city. And when you want to build a cohesive team, there's, there's five, five major traits you need. You know, you need, you need trust. Trust is the foundation, building and, building, just, just building that trust up, representation, as a community, it's something we're going to have to work on. And you need healthy conflict, not agenda-driven contract, conflict, not, not campaigning. You need constructive conflict, constructive debate, mastery, real data. You need commitment. I think that's the one thing that everybody in the city has, is commitment. You need accountability. I think we've, we've beaten that, we've beaten that horse and we know that accountability is lacking in this, in this already. And to be a truly successful team, you need the results. And so I think that's what we're focused on. We, we need to build this team with trust. We need to go through these conflicts, create that commitment, which I think is there, but they're, but they're not, they're not supported by the conflict and trust. Figure out what we're going to require for accountability and results. To that point, I support the new staff. I would support a motion to do our, our own counts. I think we should do this in a lot of places. We have our own backup to make sure the information we're getting is correct and we can check it off. I think we should do it multiple times a year. We should increase our data requirements in any contract we have with a provider and be very specific about why we want them and what they are. Specific points of where did they go to that service? Where are they now? Timelines to do that, which I hope they're all doing anyways, because I think that's how we care, care for people, it's not when they come in the door. I want to continue to support the HOPE team. I'm very excited about the HMIS and I think along with HMIS, that is where we should be keeping our own data as well. I think we should be supporting legislation on this, on this HAP. I'm looking forward, I'm supporting SB 569 currently right now, which will help us clear encampments on our Caltrans, which has been a problem, a problem issue for our sheriffs and our services. I don't see that listed in here. And then something I also didn't see, a lot of deep dive into that I think is really important here is prevention. And it was talked about by one of our speakers, that it was really important, prevention at the school level, prevention to support Section Eight and all of these, all of these at-risk groups, because I think, and I think that that is something that gets overlooked. You know, and lastly, if we dive into these steps, every step on here, every step, Goal One, Goal Two, Goal Three, when you dive into the, on the, into the steps and it talks about workforces and groups, every one of them includes businesses. I will tell you, the businesses in the city do not feel like they have been included in this plan. And I, and I think it's important. I think we would have a very different outcome, a very different viewpoint across the board if the businesses were included in this. And they're, they're they're supposed to be. They're in the current HAP that we have in front of us here. They didn't get included. There were a lot of things included. We were supposed to have a outreach, an outreach meeting. 200 people RSVP'd for it. It got canceled due to COVID and just got left on the side of the road. So I don't want to scrap it. I think to Mayor Ayers' point, there's a lot of really good in here. To Deputy Mayor Lyons and to my fellow councilmembers, there's a lot of good in here, but we need to overhaul this. I'll rest.
Mayor Ayers, before I move forward, just a reminder that there is a motion on the table. No second, but there is a motion from Councilmember Schaefer.
Can you read back the motion, too?
Absolutely. So the motion I have, and you can correct me, is direction to staff to open up a sign-up sheet for residents that want to provide housing to unhoused individuals, the sign-up sheet to be open until Labor Day and then be evaluated by staff.
Okay. Is there more discussion on that, on the motion on the table? Or I have other stuff to go into about the HAP document, which is really more just direction to the council. But question is, should I call the question?
This is a separate, this would be a separate motion. The HAP is its own thing, obviously. This is just to get this separated, to get the staff something to do.
And I'm asking, does anybody else have anything? And I'll interrupt the stack if you do. And go ahead. Do you have anything? Anybody want to speak about the motion on the table right now? If not, I'll call the question.
I'm just curious, are we talking about? Yeah, I think I would definitely want to look at developing guidelines on something like this a little bit. Like, I'm sure neighborhoods, just like they do with zoning and like with the housing mandate, are not going to want to have their zoning changed essentially because we're kind of stepping into that circle. I don't know if that's exactly the right way to put it.
Well, I don't think there's anything in that motion other than to direct staff to go look at putting this program in place and what it would take, and then come back to us with it.
Sure.
Correct. So the idea would ideally before we go to recess in July, so that we have time through the summer for people to sign up. A term that was brought up to me last night is, you know, we're focused on homeless. I know it's the past term, but what about the home-ready, right? There's 83, depending on which statistics you're looking at, there's either 83% or 88% with 15 of the routinely bad actors. So at 123 last year, 91 this year, there's again 83 or 88% that are getting services and doing their part and all that stuff. So that group would be the quote "home-ready" people that are, it's not changing zoning. They're not mentally ill. They're not having any abuse problems. It'd be...
So I think you're arguing past the close.
Sure. I just want to make sure because people are watching. I get it. I know.
I think I haven't heard anybody arguing against the concept. Does anyone have a question, clarification, or anything? Otherwise, I'll call the question that we can get back to the stack here.
Yeah. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I think I would be prepared to vote on that, but I don't think we're complete yet. We still have more to discuss.
Oh, most definitely, yeah. I'm trying to take care of the motion on the table. So I'm going to call the question because I haven't seen anybody.
Councilmember Schaefer, did I read back correctly, or did you have?
Well, I would add, Councilmember Harris, so we want to make sure that we have something in place, make sure that we hear about this ideally before June 25th, so that we can have something. If there's anything wrong with it from a zoning perspective or anything of that, make sure that we're, you know, as we open it, and that it's not to close it on Labor Day, it's just to assess it after Labor Day so that we have, you know, if there's only two people sign up and it's not happening either, we're not...
Do you want to comment on timing? I think the city manager, because remember, we're already into June. We've got so many meetings to get this adopted and...
Yeah. So thank you, Mayor, members of council. We might be able to look at the zoning pretty quickly. I mean, what it sounds like, Councilmember Schaefer, and let me know if I don't have the gist of it, it would be where people could sign up if they had maybe a room in their house or an ADU. I don't necessarily know that that would affect zoning because, again, you can occupy an ADU, you can certainly rent a room in your house, you can rent your house. It's not a short-term vacation rental, but we have, you know, guidelines on that. So I think I'm looking at our Development Services Director, also our Planning Manager, Patty Anderson. I think we can bring that back rather quickly. And then to Councilmember O'Hara's point, yeah, there probably might need to be some guidelines. I mean, I think there's, you know, definitely having folks coming to people's home, we can talk about that. Maybe we can look to see if there's any other cities, too. Maybe do a little bit of research over the summer to see if there's anything like that. I'm always big on not reinventing the wheel if it already exists. So, yeah, we can at least let you folks know if there's any, let's put it this way, if there's any zoning issues, we'll let you know. If not, then we could proceed with doing the list.
Copy. Thanks. That's it. Yes.
Okay.
So then what I have is direction to staff to open up a sign-up sheet for residents that want to provide housing to unhoused individuals, sign-up sheet to be assessed, or the response to the sign-up sheet to be assessed after Labor Day and then be evaluated by staff.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Call the question.
Hold on. Question? Are we asking staff to develop a program or to just make a sign-up sheet?
Develop a program.
Do we need a program or do we just need a sign-up sheet? Is that what's, what do you think, staff?
If you ask me, I would say start with the sign-up sheet. Give us, let us come back with some information. I think one of the goals of a sign-up sheet like that would be getting it out, getting the word out for it, which might take some time.
Yep.
Not a great deal.
Yeah, we put the word out for committees and stuff of that nature. So put the word out and see what we get back and see where our city is in actually being compassionate and doing our part as a whole city, not just the five of us up here.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I was kind of sat back in my seat when you said it, so we're excited to kind of follow through with it.
Sounds great. Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Pleasure to meet you.
Yeah, really.
All right.
That mushroom carries unanimously.
Okay, so I think I was up next, although I cleared my name. I want to put a point on my fourth goal concept here and get a little... The one thing I think is missing from the document that we really need to address is the difference between service-resistant and service-accepting. Most of the programs we're talking here, whether it's CRC, whether it's Buena Creek Navigation Center, whether it's San Diego Rescue Mission, those are all serving people willing and accepting of services. And from the numbers I've read, I've talked about them before up here, it's about a third of the homeless population across the state, across the region. The two-thirds, that's where our problem really lies. That's where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. And in fact, it's probably a subset of that group that are service-resistant that are also breaking laws, you know, whether it's defecating in public, whether it's petty theft, whatever it might be. And so I think we need to have the HAP focus on that and treat them and how we're going to get them into services. And that's why the basis for enforcement, because quite frankly, we have no way of compelling them to do it. We've talked in the past about the CARE Act. The CARE Act is voluntary, 100%. The patient can walk in the door voluntarily, an hour later, a day later, a week later, walk right out, and nothing keeps them there. We've talked about SB 43, which was passed in 2023. And that expanded the ability of the, essentially, I think, the county or state to put somebody under conservatorship. And the county pushed off its enforcement or its enactment in San Diego County until, I think, January of this year, and is still taking steps there. And so far, you still need a conservator, and I don't support the city being a conservator ever. So we'd have to have somebody willing to do that. So so far, we have a population out there, majority of ours. And in fact, when I look at the calls for service, it's not the service-accepting group that are causing the calls for service, whether it's at CRC, whether it's down on Second Street or 101. It is the service-resistant. So what I want to see is how do we move service-resistant people, especially those, in fact, those breaking the laws, to compel them to get service and to come and get drug treatment? And so with the passing of Prop 36, I think there is finally a tool, and that is if they are, it rescinded some of Prop 47 from 2014, right, that made petty theft a misdemeanor. It made drug dealing and drug possession a misdemeanor. And it now made it, if it's a repeat occurrence, the third time, they actually can be convicted of a felony. Now, it's not the felony per se, because the felony, I talked to a prosecutor who told me that they get 45 days and many of them will go into and do that. But the fact that the judge can force them now into treatment or jail, I'm not trying to put them in jail, I'm trying to get them into compelled treatment. And so I think our HAP needs to have that. Because right now, quite frankly, I think the HAP does not address almost two-thirds of the population we're dealing with. And in fact, the smaller segment of that population that is causing most of the problems, that are making people feel unsafe, that are defecating in public or intimidating people. So the goal for and the actions underneath that, because I view this document as a series of four or more goals now with actions under, I want to see actions that will help us, help the sheriff, help us, help the prosecutor, and that includes, by the way, the city prosecutor. We have to talk about how do we map the process where, I think I have to stop and explain. The penal code goes through the county prosecutor, so felonies, Prop 36, third offenses and more go through the county prosecutor. Municipal code, like defecating in public, like drunken public, disorderly conduct, that does not go to the county prosecutor, that goes to the city, and the city has to prosecute it. So we're going to want that mapped out. I want this document to map that out so we all know where it's going. And that's the purpose of this document, is to give us all a plan that fits all the laws and lets us get to the place we're trying to get to it collectively and get the people treatment that need treatment. So I want to go through a couple of other things. Somebody said, not tonight, but previously, that there's an obligation on the homeless, on the homeless that turn down services, they have an obligation to abide by our laws. And that wasn't me. That was Catherine Blakesford, our senator. And, you know, probably one of the people I disagree with more often than not, but we agree wholeheartedly on that, that it is an obligation, once they turn down services, they're obligating themselves to abiding by our laws and working within the system. We offer them a bed. We offer them full wraparound services. I support 100% doing that. I am so proud that this whole council supports doing all the services, working with their private partners. But we need to have, I always call it the carrot and the stick, you need enough of a stick in order to get them to where they need to be to be healthier and safer. And so I'm going to digress for just a moment and talk about Housing First. People have been throwing around Housing First tonight. And I would remind people to go to page, I think it is 64 of the report. There's a very good definition of Housing First. Housing First is no barrier. The Housing First program, in quotes, is no barrier. That means they put people doing drugs in an apartment with other people doing drugs, and they do not stop them. Everything we offer as a city is either high barrier, or the very first program that we did that was low barrier was the Buena Creek Navigation Center, where they can come in drunk, or they can come in on drugs, but they can't do it on-site. So we just have to be very careful. I am not, I believe the Housing First is a failure. The studies I have read, like San Francisco is a book, cites the mortality rate in Housing First equals the mortality rate out on the street. And that's not compassion. That's not helping people. That's just moving it out of sight. That's a different way of moving it out of sight. So I do support the support of housing, rapid rehousing, all of that, but not supporting doing drugs or letting them do drugs in our housing. So like I say, there's an obligation. That was important. If staff could bring up the point-in-time count, I want to talk a little bit about the point-in-time count trends. And I'm looking at data. I'm like Scott, I'm a data guy. And I really appreciate the fact that this has been going on for 10 years. And I understand there have been some changes. The report even says there was a change in methodology prior to 2020. But if you look at the purple in particular, which is the unsheltered, and that's the number I'm really focused on, it's bounced up and down. There may be, I think, the only thing you can say, if you stay away from all the hyperbole, you can say that it's pretty much flat to slightly increasing. I have heard people recently and even tonight say it's exponentially increasing. That tells me that is not true, that at best I can say it's flat or slightly increasing as a trend for the unsheltered. It's right there. Yeah. And I actually kind of, at first I thought, oh, I don't want to do our own count. But you know what? I'm warming up to it. Why? Because of going back to that map. When I looked at the map and I'm going, holy cow, I don't know what I'm counting and what I'm not counting. But I'm on the hook, we're on the hook for Encinitas, not Del Mar, not Solana Beach, not San De Gito, not Forest Ranch. And so, you know, I would support maybe getting a volunteer group and doing it near the same time in order to get a better Encinitas boundary only, just to understand what our problem is and help corroborate these numbers. So I could keep, I'm going to run down a few other really quick things that I want, and I'll see if I have support for this. One of the comments in the report was, or I forget where it was, is that there's a difficulty with the Buena Creek Navigation Center, which I fully support, and I even went to the one-year anniversary. But there was a problem with personal, with professional transportation getting people to it. And I'd like our plan to address contracting or whatever it takes to get professional transportation so that we can get people to and from Buena Creek Navigation Center, to make it more virtual, but actually get them there. We haven't talked about tonight, but we've talked about it with staff, a citywide by-name list. And that is where the world's going. Yeah, that's right, John. You know, we all want to do it. It's building off of the HMIS, which is by individual. And when we say by-name list, we're not talking about tracking them by their actual names. We're talking about tracking individuals with individual trajectories through the system. And so I want the HAP to do that. I talked about that. For now, we probably, the HAP report, by the way, I went and looked at neighboring cities. And the Carlsbad HAP report, which I think was complimented by several people tonight, 14 pages, 14 pages. It just got to the heart of the goals and actions, goals and actions. And there is a lot of fluff. And there's, you know, somebody criticized hyperbole. I'd say there's a bit of hyperbole in this document. I'd love to see that all taken out, keep it to the facts. And so I probably have a few more on here, but I'm going to yield here because I'm running long on time. I wanted to talk about one last thing, and that is whether we use a consultant to update this or whether we use our internal. I would not want to hand this off to a consultant. And we may not have, you may not be the experts in homelessness. I expect you to use a consultant occasionally, but you know Encinitas. Consultants, what I've seen consistently with some of our general plan element updates is we just push it off, we've in the past pushed it off to a consultant, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and gotten back stuff that's completely disconnected with Encinitas. So, you know, I would love to see it simplified in general. I think, what was it? You know, the original plan was done with a consultant. I don't want to go back to that consultant or, quite frankly, you know, any consultant except use them surgically as we need them for different areas. And with that, I will yield.
Well, that was a lot. So thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that was great. It was all good stuff. I feel that the by-name list, I think it's a good start. I think that also helps our point-in-time count, right? That's the whole, that's, we should basically be able to go right to the place, and there they are, and we're up a number, down a number. So it actually becomes something that we could do monthly or whatever. So it actually becomes something that we could do monthly or whatever it is. I know that, first, before I forget, because I just saw him, but Captain Shane Watts has done a phenomenal job since the start of the year, his team, they've done 26 arrests, they've gone at the heart of the problem. You know, Teresa Walsh, her story about working at Bliss and having those issues, that those, my inbox is filled with those conversations. People that I grew up with, their mothers emailing me specifically saying that they go to Carlsbad now to walk, or they go to Solana Beach to walk, they do not walk here. So where are those counts? We don't get those counts. But to Captain Watts and your team, they are going at the heart of the quote, bad actors and trying to do our part. And I've heard from a couple of different friends as well that they've seen an improvement downtown, but then it, it waves back and forth. And so with all of the things that you said, Mayor, I think that there's, like you said, a more surgical way to go about this. I referenced the numbers that were at 15 individuals, plus or minus, we're at 17% of our current 91 that, that are creating a large amount of fear in a town that just, it doesn't need it. We have such a great city, people travel here far and wide to visit friends, family, and then they don't want to leave typically. We have, we have this great piece of property. So how are we letting individuals deter our actions and push us out of the places that we like to frequent after working hard all year round? We're coming into the summer months. We want to go enjoy our beaches, our community, our downtown. And it's, quite honestly, it's despicable that it's gotten this far. I just, I don't think that it's appropriate that we've allowed it to get this far. There was a gentleman that said there was a time that we used to drive him to the edge of town and do that. Things have changed over the years and we've gotten softer on certain things, but there's a term that I use in my, my former job as a Marine Corps officer, but it's firm but fair. And every single person here has had a case of the Mondays and don't want to get up and do all the things you're responsible for. You know what I'm saying? So at what point are we going to make sure that these people are doing the things that they don't want to do? But it's time to do it and get out of our way to be able to use the places that we call home. They're, a lot of cases transient, they picked this place, a beacon, because it's gorgeous, because it's beautiful. Yogananda didn't put Swamis there by mistake. This place has got something special about it. And so if we keep allowing this and allowing that to happen, to be quite honest, John, it's giving your business a bad name. So the sad truth, I know there's a lot of people supporting the CRC, is we're not here to talk about the CRC, but the fact is, is your business, because of the nature of it, is the closest to it. And so if there's anybody that would be willing to do the most, I'd hope it'd be your team because it's your, you're the one that's suffering the most, you're the one that takes all of these comments predominantly because you've been there since 1979. And at that time, there was 10,000 people in town. Slightly different, there's no, there's not as much traffic, you don't have to change Santa Fe Drive, you don't have to do a lot of these other things that we're doing now because we're impacted not just by the current population, but a growing population. So I want to make sure that with our four goals, or whatever we try to do, the overhaul that we're talking about, that the teeth is, are in it. And again, all of the work you're doing down at the other end to our city attorney, to the county, but we need to have a way to make sure that something holds when we arrest them. Our arresting officers are actually doing their part and we up here are not supporting that effort. And I would just be remiss if something happened to any one of our citizens, let alone our daughters or something of that nature, because of this. I'll leave it with this and I'll, I have a personal experience with this. My wife grew up in Hermosa, the neighbor directly across the street lives on the Strand in Hermosa. He is a heart surgeon, his wife was an emergency room physician. She went out to help a homeless woman, and the woman stabbed her in the throat, her husband was right there, as a heart surgeon was unable to revive her. And with the individuals at Swamis, with under the bridge, and any of these locations, again, my job was to defend these borders at one point, and it's very different than protecting it, or than, than doing what Shane, Captain Shane Watts was doing. It was much more aggressive on a different part of the world than this. And that is unacceptable to me, 100%. So it's time that we put these, the teeth back into this HAP. We draw the line at compassion, if you're going to do your part, there is not a city more compassionate in the world. The second you're not going to hold to that, this is not the home for you. And I want that to be a statement loud and clear to every single citizen that we are not going to allow that anymore, period.
All right, I'll be, I'll be really quick. What, quick, just first, one quick thing is, so if, when you, when you do the point in time count, or when they do the point in time count, not to, you know, somebody set it up here as a reinvent the wheel, can we not send out our own volunteers to kind of follow along and, I guess, take the point in time count at the same time they do? I mean, we don't have to set it up, we could follow along with them. I'm sure no government agency wants to be, somebody looking over their shoulder, but I mean, if they're doing it already and we can get our own numbers behind them, I don't see why that would be a problem. Anyways, just thought I'd throw that out there. I, just like to what Councilman Schaefer said, there's definitely a lot of speak of compassion, compassion for the unhoused, compassion for, you know, how we treat them. And I, I agree, that's, that's a big deal. But to what the business owners here, I'm a business owner here, right in downtown, a lot of business owners come to me because they know I'm there, I think I've said it before up here. What about the compassion for them, the compassion for our daughters, the compassion for our wives, compassion for, shoot, the guys, I don't, we're all, nobody wants to be, have to feel like they have to puff their chest up and be like, yeah, I got to protect something right now in our own town. I mean, I'm just saying it, there's, there's got to be compassion for that as well. And I think that to what Mayor Ellis was saying is, I think the teeth in that would be the enforcement part of it, the laws and the codes, I think that is how we would put the teeth into this so that we, to what Councilman Schaefer said, it's like we need to tell them, you know, these people that this is not, this is not the town for that, that we are, we are not that, this town. I was talking to one of my customers and she was on something in the school board, but she mentioned something to me that, you know, I found really interesting. It was, it's called Sunbreak Ranch. I don't know if anybody's heard of it, I don't know if anybody's ever looked at it. I looked at it when she mentioned it to me yesterday, so I looked at it last night. I'm, I mean, I know it's not built yet, it's not, it's, Bill Walton was one of the big proponents for it. But it's like a community, basically, that if we, if something were to happen here, or from what I've read, is that it's a facility that would be built, that would have housing, it would have medical, it would have, you know, I guess all the, everything that wouldn't be needed to help unhoused, or these people that don't, don't want services, right? You send them to there. Again, I'm not trying to push them out, but there's already like land that they've talked about, it's, it's over in Miramar, I believe. I thought that was such an interesting way to, interesting thing to, to have. I know it's not built yet, I think they're looking for partners, I think they're looking for other cities, because, you know, they got, it's got to be built, it's got to be funded. I know we, we're always looking for something else to fund, but, I mean, if you wanted to help these people, and it doesn't have to be here in Encinitas, again, it's not, we're not, we're not gonna, I don't see us building a shelter here right away, but it's something that's off-site, off, out of our city, that is already currently have, already currently probably has land, is from what I understand. But it offers all those, all those, all those things to help. I just, I thought it was interesting. I, I'm not saying to build one here, I'm just saying it's, it was interesting to read and it was interesting that it was, that it was a possibility. I don't know, I just throw it out there. But I'll, I'll yield.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Lines.
So what I'd like to do now is bring the conversation to some specific tasks. What I hear us doing is recommending that staff bring forward some changes to the HAP. And being that that's what we're doing, I'd like to be specific and articulate those, maybe in general terms without getting too down in the detail, but, and I don't, and I guess I would turn to the city manager to see if, whether there, there might then be a need for additional funding that we should consider. But that aside, just based on giving staff the direction, I feel comfortable making a motion that includes a couple of things that I feel that the city council may have concurrence on. One is to continue with the programs that we are focused on in the HAP. I would like to add that we add a goal four for enforcement. Enforcement would cover what we're doing and what can be done within the full extent of the law, as it's associated with our actions, associated with homelessness in our community. And if there needs to be a little bit more clarification around that, Captain Watts is invited to give some. But ultimately, all of our goals and action items in the HAP could be measured and, and reported back and assessed based on the SMART goals, the acronym SMART, that Councilmember Schaefer suggested. That's a well-known measurement tool. And I think all of our goals could be measured through that objective for data and how we assess how we're doing. I do want to emphasize too, that on goal three, which is probably we've made the least progress on, I would like to focus on both affordable housing as an objective associated with providing housing for those who are looking for it, and also the Housing Navigator, which is an element that was, that we did have and has fallen off the radar as far as having staff handle that. And I'd love to make sure that that's brought back into what we consider. And I've also heard there seems to be support for doing our own count as a citywide, as a citywide action. And the other things I think are already covered, which would include the citywide by-name list, but maybe if that's not clear yet, maybe I can add that. I know that the HMIS is, is a broader geographic area, so maybe we do need to be specific about there being a citywide by-name list. And I'll put that motion out and see if there's some discussion or anything around that.
I'll second it with, if you'll accept a couple of minor friendly amendments. On the goal four, I just want to make sure it includes explicitly addressing the service resistant process. I just don't want that to get lost.
All right, that's acceptable.
And goal three, I would, I would ask that we talk about-
I'm still going to speak, you guys.
Oh, I know, I'm just, they're just seconding. I'm seconding with a modification.
Might have something to say about these things, right?
Okay. Well, then I'll second it for discussion, I'll come back with a friendly amendment later. So go ahead, Councilmember O'Hara.
I mean, some of this is following up on, on the importance of number four. I think it's important to note that, that 32% that you speak of is heavily networked and they know their rights. And so we should be, as a council, looking to work with our sheriffs to increase ordinances or ordinances that are the proper tools in the shed as part of number four. I know that I will be working on a panhandling ordinance coming up to, to send to council as we have other issues going on, just as an example. And I'd like to, as part of number four, put a measure in that discourages the recruitment of outside homeless from Encinitas. I would like to do some sort of focus on our homeless in a way that allows us to focus on our problem we have here, that doesn't, that doesn't encourage people to come here looking for services specifically. And I know that some of our, I don't, I don't know that any of our, our current nonprofits advertise, I don't, I don't believe they do, but I know that a lot of their, I know that a lot of our current nonprofits that we work with have affiliates that probably advertise that Encinitas is a place that we can come for services. So I'd like to include that in there in some way. I do think we have enough on our hands as is, and I think that we need to identify the people who belong here. And even within that, you know, it gets back to that compassion and accountability, you The gentleman we all saw on the street, sheriff did an amazing job picking him up, and he was on the streets in Chula Vista an hour and a half later. I have a call coming with your loss, Raymer, about this exact thing, and how our partnerships need to work. And I think there needs to be, somewhere in here, we address creating expectations of what we want the county, or what we need out of the county to be successful. I see a lot of programs in here giving us different information, but I don't see anything saying, hey, here's what we need the county to do, and here's, here's the chain of command we're going to have with Supervisor Raymer's office, should something like that happen, like our, our bat phone, if you want to call it that in this case, that we pick up and say, hey, I just heard this happen to this gentleman who, who is part of our community, and now he's walking around in his community, he doesn't know, certainly need to help him. And he's going to make his way back up here and we're going to go through this cycle over and over again. So I think that should be added to it. I am on item number three, I would need a lot of help to dive into Housing First. I think we've shown that we can increase, increase the availability of temporary housing, Buena Creek Navigation Center has showed that. But I think our current explanation of Housing First is every time a nonprofit stands up in the dais and says, build this giant place like Quill Meadows. And I don't see the population we're talking about living in those units. I don't think Fox Point has anybody, I don't think Triton has anybody, sure as heck, no, Quill Meadows isn't going to have anybody. And so Housing First, you're going to have to define that in a way that is connecting people to real housing. And I, you know, I think maybe some inclusion of what we talked about, getting a list together. But Housing, Housing First currently lies on the state mandate, and I got to tell you, the state mandate is something I'm highly opposed to. Lastly, I would talk about the, Councilmember San Antonio talked about this and brought this up, and I thought this was great, and I wanted to expand on this, a discussion I had with the city manager, you know, about compassion, accountability, and a place like Sunbreak, Sunbreak Ranch, which isn't up yet, or there are other places. You know, we've done more in this city than our neighbors have, we've done more than Solana Beach, and more than Del Mar. And we collaborated with Vista. Nobody's doing that, nobody's collaborating to do things together. But I think that's something we've proven we can do, and something in here we should strive to, as one of our goals, to collaborate with somebody, because I don't think we can afford to build a shelter here. I think it'd be the worst decision, business decision you could ever make. So, but we could team up with another, a place like Sunbreak Ranch, another municipality, put some real money together and actually build something in a place that, that is set up for it. And I don't know Sunbreak Ranch, I don't want to assume those neighbors are excited about it, that, I don't, I haven't read up on it, I'm just going off of what I heard in this conversation. Doesn't have to be Sunbreak Ranch, a place like that where we can all look into. We can collaborate is the point and get a better result. And I don't see that in this homeless action plan. So I think diving into that and adding that mode of compassion, where we collaborate, figure out ways that are real solutions, to collaborate with other, other municipalities and other groups. And within that, I think something we should have in direction to staff on, not necessarily on the HAP, but in generals, I think we should expand our net to explore who our partnership options are in all of this. Just like we would any purchase, we look at online all the, all the options, and we pick the ones who can serve the needs of the city the best. Not the ones who are convenient, not the ones who've been in here all the time, but the ones who want to do it the best. And I think what we'll find if we do that is the, the options we get presented to us will be better. We make them, we, we figure out what the best options are and we put it together. We make them, we figure out what the best options are, and we put it together, and we can collaborate more with them in that regard. So I do want, and whatever we come to in here, I want to have staff expand that net and explore our partnership options.
You done?
I yield. Sorry.
Okay. So that's a perfect segue. So partnering with those other municipalities, but we also have a county supervisor that lives literally half a mile from here. We have an assemblywoman that lives in Village Park and a state senator that lives just a couple of miles there that should be helping us immensely to become the place that is the forefront for how to do it, not how not to do it. I want to ask Captain Watts and Tarquin, our city attorney, what are your suggestions? Do you have any?
Yeah, I think obviously a lot of good discussion. I think compassion is something that we, as the sheriff's office, will always be compassionate first. When we encounter these individuals that are unhoused or experiencing homelessness, we are going to be compassionate. We will always offer the services. Now, however, we have already transitioned, as you know, into a zero tolerance. Just because we have compassion and we want to give them the resources, by them being resource resistant, I can arrest them compassionately. And we have also seen that, you know, over many contacts, many arrests with these individuals, it could be this one, and it could be the next one, that when we encounter them, that they say, I'm ready for resources. So, I mean, I brought a list of municipal codes that we have already enforced so far this year. I can put it up if you're interested. But the sheriff's office is one part of the wheel, and we have a very small opportunity when we're dealing with the resource resistant to make that example, that when you are in our city, you will follow our laws, or you will be held accountable. My deputies are out there holding them accountable, but I need that full circle. So all of these are municipal codes, and I would put this up against years past and be comfortable enough to say that in the last five months of zero tolerance, we've done more than we have in years past. So, but that doesn't mean we're not going to be compassionate. And the majority of the population is not what this discussion is about. And I always want to make sure that we separate homelessness with criminal acts. We're focusing on the criminal acts. And it just so happens that there is a small population within that community that we deal with a lot, because they are breaking the law. And these numbers will show that we're holding them accountable.
Love it. I thank you. And do you mind if I share the example you shared with me yesterday? There's, one of your officers was in Vista, saw one of these individuals experiencing homelessness, and asked, you know, how he's doing. He said he's not coming back to Encinitas. And that's a clear example of the proper path. And he's getting, he's getting the message that it's not his place to be here if he's going to continue to break the law. Thank you for that. Is there any recommendation that you want to see us put forth to help you in our request of you?
I think that there is discussion when it comes to our municipal codes. I think there's some slight corrections that would give us a little bit more to work with, but those are things that we can discuss. But yeah, you have all been very supportive, and we appreciate the support.
Okay. And if there's an appropriate time or appropriate meeting to get with city manager to make sure that we get a chance to make this a forefront, agenda item, not a consent calendar, some of that nature, any of those suggestions that we can actually push forward and get done as soon as possible ideally. Then the question's over to Tarquin. What are any suggestions that you have that can help us in our efforts here?
Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. My office has been dedicated to even-handedly and fairly enforcing the misdemeanor provisions of the municipal code as arrested by or cited by the sheriff's department. My office is taking these cases to court. We are prosecuting these cases. That is a long stand, that is a change from longstanding practice where the municipal code was not actually being enforced by the city attorney's office and enforces misdemeanors. So that is how we are helping augment the sheriff's department efforts to enforce the law.
Do you have any recommendations for what we need to add to our HAP to make it everything that we've talked about without having to recap it all?
Not specifically to the HAP, but as Captain Watts mentioned, there are some areas of the code that need to be, or in my opinion, need to be updated and modernized to aid enforcement.
Phenomenal. So if there's any way that the two of you, or once he gets it over to you, or whatever, maybe separate, so that we make sure that we have your own each version of what your recommendations are, so not to turn it into one, so they're separate recommendations, please, and I thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Item one, to get more specific, to actually get into work on this, is increase the capacity of the city and the community to end homelessness in Encinitas. By how much is the question I want to add? Through the demand of a collaborative, community-driven approach. By when? So those need to be added, the how much and by when. Otherwise, we're not actually giving a measurement to anything. And we can keep showing these, but even to break them down to even more colors, any of the individuals that have been arrested or repeated, or any of those things that we can get a little bit more color, a little more clarity in the purple, right? Because the ones that are in the red or the other color, they're on their track. They're on their way forward. They're moving forward. It's not forever necessarily, but let's get into the purple and make sure that we have a couple more colors up there that really define what it is specifically, that they were arrested six times, da, 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 whatever it is. And then finally, they found a shelter. That's great. Now we can start to show our success and show that we are doing it right. Again, I've asked every single department when I first got here, what are the top three cities in the state? And not one of them mentioned our city. So we're pretty lucky because of our geolocation that we should be the top. And then our socioeconomics and all the other things that go with it, our climate, if we're not at the top, we're doing something wrong. So I go to number two. By when and how much needs to be added to that goal. And then the number three, which is something that Councilmember O'Hara mentioned, going off of Mr. Van Cleef's ABCs of homelessness, that any bed is probably not our residence, but the better bed and the continuous bed is part of that first motion that we put. So I'm hoping that we see an outpour of people that are serious about their compassion. I think 100% of us up here are serious about it, as this is not a financial benefit to all of us, and the three of us here have young kids still in our house. So we are putting our money, or lack of money, where our mouth is to be up here doing exactly what we say we're going to do. So I would love to see the rest of the city to, again, start putting up. I appreciate it. I'll yield.
Okay. So we got a motion, and you preempted me. I was going to call on Captain Watts, and then I was also going to have our fire chief come up. So I'll continue on the questions you didn't ask, but thank you. So you showed all the municipal code things that you have been enforcing. What about penal codes? Is there another list of quite a few? And I'm talking about homeless-related in particular.
Well, homelessness is not a crime, so it's hard for us to quantify some of those penal codes being, I mean, we enforce all the penal codes. So yeah, I would have a hard time figuring out which ones were directed just towards homelessness.
Well, I guess all the ones you showed will go through the city prosecutor as opposed to the county.
Correct.
Okay. And there may be some in the future with Prop 36 that will go through the county because they are, they wobble, or whatever they call it, up to a felony potentially. So I'm going to ask Chief Gordon the same question. What kind of percentage roughly of your deputies' bandwidth is being consumed by this problem in particular? Is this significant? I'll start with Captain Watts, and then I'll go to, yeah.
I would say that, I mean, we have a four-person team that is dedicated to focusing just on this, whether that's outreach, whether that's providing resources and enforcement. Now, the enforcement doesn't just stop with those four, but as you heard from the community, I mean, we get calls for service a lot when it's dealing with the unhoused that are breaking the law. So yes, there is a dedicated focus to that population. But like I said, that incorporates resources and outreach.
So regular deputies, non-hope deputies are also involved in enforcing some of this?
Correct. We get calls for service.
Is it fair to call it a significant portion? You know, maybe not a majority, but not 1%, 10% of your deputies' bandwidth? My point being, we're spending real money here. You're spending real resources and getting this problem under control, and rather than, it's almost as though we've been pushing the same homeless person down our own street just to arrest him again and deal with him again in a day or two. If we can actually get him into treatment, get him healthy, that takes the problem and takes away that cost stream completely. So we could actually end up freeing up more resources for you to do other enforcement and more penal code crime solving instead. So, and so I don't need an exact number, but I think Captain, or Captain Chief Gordon might have a similar type of story. What, you get called to quite a few, your people get called to quite a few calls that involve homeless, and I believe you track it. So can you comment?
We do track it, yeah. So in 2024, we ran 562 calls for service on unhoused individuals. Sometimes those are investigative responses where maybe they're just sleeping and somebody, you know, drove by and called on them, but sometimes they are transported to the hospital. Sometimes they're transported to the hospital, released, walk across the street to Vons, and then call 911 again and transport back. But it is the same 15 to, you know, 20 people that we transport often.
And what's your total call volume for the year? The 562 versus?
Approximately 7,000.
7,000. So it's-
Right there at 8% to 10%.
Okay. That's exactly-
I just did the numbers.
And you usually have to roll both a, typically an ambulance and an engine to those. So we're putting wear and tear on our million-dollar trucks every time. So there's-
Most often, yes. Some of the responses are an investigation of some kind of fire or campfire or something like that. So, but most, most of the time, it's a medical aid that we're sending an ambulance and a fire engine to.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate the input. So motion on the table. I'm going to try and summarize it, and I have a couple of friendly amendments to offer. They're pretty minor. And then I think I'm going to try and bring in what Councilmember O'Hara said, too, if you're open to that. So I wrote down the following and see if I'm close to what you wanted to do. Number one, continue with the programs in the HAP. I agree. Number two, add Goal Four enforcement with actions beneath it, and basically describing what we are doing today and can do under the law. I would, I would add to that, that one explicitly address service resistant in addition to everything else, but I want to make sure we're very explicit about service resistant. I agree with the offer from, that I do, that enhance the ordinances for the sheriff. I think that should be an action under Goal Four, that we investigate any enhancements that staff and the sheriff would like to bring forward to our, and city attorney, to our ordinances. So those are two additions to Goal Four. Number three was SMART goals for all of them, which I think we have, I saw consensus tonight. Number four was, I had a minor addition to the Goal Three affordable housing. I think we should make it about acutely affordable and critically affordable, which are new low categories that really do apply to this problem. If we're talking about building more moderate housing, that's not going to help anybody that's homeless. And quite frankly, low-income housing, folks, remember, starts at around $100,000 a year for a family of four. That's the threshold. So that is not the people we're talking about here. So I think the affordable housing component for Goal Three should be explicitly addressing at a minimum acutely affordable, and I think the other one is critically affordable. So that's a second add. The Housing Navigator being brought back, I agree with that. Whether internal or contract is what I would add to that. Do our own count of just the city of Encinitas. I agree with that. By name lists citywide in coordination with the HMIS. So those are, I think I covered all the ones in years with my additions. And then I think I would entertain the Goal Four addition about enhancing the ordinance for the sheriff, but let's see. I would add discouraging recruitment of outside homeless, and I would change that, maybe not discourage as much as measure it and determine how to-
I like discourage. I prefer discourage.
But I think we need to say measure.
Well, can we measure?
And limit.
And discourage. So let's measure it for sure.
Yeah.
But let's also discourage.
So, and then I heard coordination with the county, the supervisor office in particular. And then I think the other thing is, I wanted to make sure Housing First, as defined in this document, and I think Jim said this too, but I would, I spoke at it earlier, that we take Housing First, as defined in this document, off the table. I am not a no-barrier Housing First guy. I think I heard Jim say that. I'm seeing consensus on that. So those, I know I threw a lot at you just there.
So I'm going to respond to the friendly amendments. I am, I am in favor of still keeping low and very low housing, affordable housing on the table. It's definitely a need we have that we haven't been able to focus on, and why take it off? Why not continue to look for affordable housing? But I agree, it should be low, it should be very low, it should be acute, and it should be critically low. So I will accept that if you'll consider low and very low. And I just want to make a point about the Housing First. I don't understand that it's in our, that it's in our document. It's referenced only because it's a state.
It's one of our goals.
Where do you see it in a goal?
I think it's page 62 that it's described. No, it's 64. 64. It's one of the appendices about state, county, regional efforts, and it's about halfway down the page.
Yeah, I see it there. I thought that was for reference, so maybe staff could clarify that for me. This looks like it's a state program, but are we tying ourselves to the state program in this document, or is it just here for reference?
What I would add for council consideration is that a lot of the grant funding opportunities that we would have available to us potentially all have a Housing First focus. So I wouldn't necessarily recommend that being removed from the document. A lot of the ERF grant funding needed to have that Housing First approach as well. So if we want to be competitive, we want to make sure that we don't take out the eligibility criteria for that.
Don't we have a hard time qualifying for ERF grants?
Hang on, Jim. I want her to finish, and then we'll go to Luke next.
So I'm okay not having it in. I mean, I don't see that this document ties us to that program. So what you're saying that is that if we can say that we're taking on the objectives of this program, then we're more eligible for grants? I don't see that this document says that we're doing that, that we're taking, that we're following the objectives of this program. Do you see that this document says we're following the objectives of Housing First? I'm just looking for clarification. I just didn't see that here.
So Appendix H is referencing that program. However-
It is.
The, all of the grants that are being put out by the state and our TPH, they all reference the Housing First model for even being eligible to apply for their grants. So I would caution looking at that closely when we work on the HAP update and provide more information back to the council on that.
I don't think, I don't think we're feeling that we're supportive enough of that approach to say that we want to tie ourselves to it. So I'm okay clarifying.
to say that we want to tie ourselves to it. So I'm okay clarifying that, for now, until I know more about the Housing First and I understand more about where we can get money, I'm fine to add that as a...
Okay, very good. Any other?
Friendly amendment.
Yeah.
No, no, everything.
Okay. And Luke's got the floor next, and then Jim.
So to go off of what she was just asking is, can we put that Housing First into a Sunbreak Ranch-type model and help out with that kind of regional model? You know, I think that's something the county should be doing, personally. But, you know, like Jim said, it really doesn't pencil out at $8 a square foot to build Housing First here at some of the most expensive real estate in California, which puts us at the, some of the most expensive real estate in the country. It's not, it's not a smart use of that dollar amount.
Maybe I think I can clear this up pretty quickly. All I was saying is that there was a lot of talk today, mostly from the audience, about Housing First. And Housing First is well-described in here as what it is, no barrier. Other people I detected were using it as low barrier, or even just get people in houses and assuming they're healthy. I just don't want us to be tied, and I think Deputy Mayor Lyons got it correctly. I just want to make sure that the direction to staff is, don't in the HAP tie us to Housing First. If a grant opportunity comes to us in the future that we can evaluate it and decide, do we want to apply for it or not, as a Housing First mandate. But leave the Housing First definition in here, but I don't want anything, and I haven't seen it in there, but there was a lot of discussion. I just want to be crystal clear that Housing First, in my opinion, is a failed. And I heard people in the audience say that it's working, and everything I've read says it's failing. Housing First, getting people into housing, rapid rehousing works, but...
It's out of sight, out of mind. It's let them die behind closed doors versus out on the street. And it's not, I get you. Yeah, I get it. I want to just round up that we just spent $916,000 on two new deputies to help our streets with four-time, full-time employees dedicated to homeless. I just hope you'll realize that we just spent basically almost a million dollars for two more deputies, specifically. I just want to make sure that's out there on the record. Everybody gets that. We just spent a million dollars, by and large, to get two more deputies so that they can enforce traffic laws because we have more people in town running red lights, doing stupid things, causing more issues. So it's a real problem, and it costs real dollars. And that's just on the sheriff's side, not to mention what our fireside is doing at basically 9% of their calls dedicated to this, wear and tear. So we're spending well over a million dollars, and then some, because it's only two deputies, but four full-time. So just so everybody realizes, we're probably closer to the $2 million, $1.5, $2 million a year on this, on 91 citizens, or not, 91 people in our town that aren't maybe in hard times, but not productive in paying the portion that we all have to pay to make sure this happens. So I just, that has to be out there. I will say, I think that it's important, we have a resident expert, a gentleman named Matt Simmons, who is a nationally-recognized professional at point in time counts and by name. And he lives right here in the city. I think he has spoken here a number of times. I think he'd be willing, at least that was a conversation we had, in either offering his services or helping us, because it's his hometown, and be able to kind of, a really good rate, if not free, if that makes sense, to help us get something figured out, again, become one of the leaders in the country, not just a follower as we have some, we have it. And we should be able to do that. So I'll leave it there.
Okay. Councilmember O'Hara.
I'm going to put a replacement motion in. A lot of it builds off of Mayor Ayers, but I think it's a little more specific to what we're looking for. So I'm going to, this is my replacement motion. I'm going to go step by step on the mayor's points here. Step one, I think, put by the deputy mayor, was continue with programs. I believe we need to continue with programs and evaluate the programs with a goal of understanding what data we are receiving, and what data we are missing, and what data we need to be functional in this. I think that's a very big distinction in that. Goal Four, adding Goal Four is on my list, specifically addressing service resistance, enhancing the sheriff's work. And I believe we need to add lobbying to that. And even though that does carry overload with the sheriffs, it also carries into other areas that we just spoke about, like the ERFs. Number three, smart goals. I think those have been agreed upon by everybody up here. Number four, Goal Three, I think we've shown the ability to, but I think to what Councilmember San Antonio have spoken to, it should be, it should be the, keep the availability of temporary housing, and it should be, it should address that we can't afford to build a shelter. So permanent housing is not, is not an option. It should be identifying ways to manage the barriers of permanent housing. Because we have a barrier. We're never going to, we're not going to be able to. State's not giving us a mandate to build it, and it's not something, if we just say that we're going to do permanent housing, we're going to have somebody up at this every week saying we need to build a shelter, and we don't have the money. It's not, it's not a fair promise to the homeless, it's not a fair promise to our residents. It's certainly not fiscally responsible. So that's my adjustment to Goal Four, to Goal Three. Bring back a Housing Navigator. Number six is do our own count, our own time count or HMIS count. I do believe we do need that redundancy to make sure that we are getting accurate results. The by-name list, of course, keeping that in there, in Encinita specific. I believe we should, what was point eight you put up there, Bruce?
It was discourage, discourage, and there was another word I put in there, right?
It was measure.
Measure, thank you.
So it was measure, and it was, I want to say, discourage with a goal of focusing on our existing and local population. Discourage beyond that. Because I think that's what we're saying, is we need to focus on who's here first, who exists here, who has family here, the people we can actually probably help and probably need it, as opposed to finding people who their own municipalities can help them, or, you know, after the fact. But putting our people that we can actually make a difference with at the front and address the problem that's already here, as opposed to bringing new issues. Nine, coordinate with supervisor. That, I believe, coordinating supervisor is a huge piece of this, something in here that looks to connect with her, in this case, her currently, to talk about how we can work together, how we can support our sheriffs together, how we can get a very high rate of prosecution, and why currently I don't see that happening. And having an open door as part of it. That'll be up to the supervisor to agree to that, but that's okay. We'll ask. There's no harm to ask.
So what are you adding to that one?
Coordinate with supervisor.
Which is what I think that was in the base, right?
That was in it, yep. And last one, our Housing First idea should be, Housing First that addresses the barriers. I think we're going to have to be really careful to not put language in there that leaves us open to HCD, in this case, and HUD. We say that, but we've got letters from them.
I think all I was saying is, on number 10, was just don't mandate Housing First in the document.
Correct. So I guess it's addressing the barrier, right? Like, when I say the barrier, what addresses the barrier to getting funding when it's appropriate? And I mean, I know we had an ERF fund that came up on November, that was discontinued by staff on November 18th of last year, that council voted on. Staff decided it wasn't that important. And so it never came back to us. It never got put through. So I would like something in our housing element that lets us know if that's important or not important. Because obviously, in this case, no one told us, and whatever was $2 million, we didn't vote on it, and it got...
It wasn't us, it was previous council.
It was, yeah. It never came back. Council voted on June 24, or June, let's see, I got it right here. But regardless, council voted on it, went to staff, staff decided they weren't, they didn't think we were going to get this grant, for whatever reason. They discontinued it, and we didn't get it. So I personally would have loved to have that come back. After November 18th, we were probably sitting up here at some point, close to that. And I would have loved to have had a conversation about how we can do that. So I think Housing First, but addressing the barrier so that we are in those conversations and deciding, not taking ourselves out of the conversations, but also something that makes sure that those barriers are clear, and it's not, to your point, it's focusing on all of our needs and not things we...
I just want to clarify on that last point. What are you looking to change and add to or detract or take out of the motion on the table?
I think we want to address, we want to address the barriers of what would be the bonus of being Housing First, not being Housing First, when it comes back to us. And from there.
Well, I think that's a future action beyond the housing, home. Are you asking for something in the homeless action plan discussing that? And my thought was, I'd rather leave Housing First out of the homeless action plan. As we get grant opportunities, like the one you were describing, if they require Housing First, I think we have that as a council at that point.
I think what he's trying to say is, previous council had voted on a grant, and the previous city manager, not to name names, took it off the table, and on her own, and it never came back to the city council. And we want to make sure that we're not missing the grant opportunity of $2.8 million specifically for this.
And council actions should be subject to council changes. So if something happened like that, then it just, we, it doesn't belong in the housing, the homeless action plan. We already operate to the rules that council decisions should be only undone by council.
I think what he's saying is, his item 10 is already the way you want it.
No, it's fine. I just want to make sure we're writing this in a way that we're not going to miss out on opportunities if we can.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I have a substitute motion with, and so I've got Deputy Mayor Lyons wants to speak to it.
I'm going to put Kathy on the spot here because I'm trying to figure out how the substitute motion is different from the original motion. I know you were writing very...
I changed number one. I changed number four. Eight.
I don't have them numbered, so maybe I could ask Kathy to tell me.
You want me to read the first one and then read the second one?
Yes.
Okay, so for the first one, what I have was, both of them are to rec, excuse me. Sorry. So both of them are to rec-staff to incorporate following amendments to the HAP goals and activities. So the first motion was to continue with programs currently included in the HAP, add a Goal Four, which was for enforcement, include what is being done, can be done legally, include service-resistant process, and enhance ordinance and municipal code as needed. The third one was develop metrics to assess smart goals. The next one was Goal Three, focus on affordable housing, adding acutely, critically low, very low housing, also including the Housing Navigator. The next was city to conduct its own count. The next was to develop a citywide by-name list. Next was to measure and discourage recruitment of outside homeless. The next was to remove any lang, oh, don't, remove any language that mandates Housing First. And then the second motion, which was from Councilmember O'Hara, I have continue with programs and evaluate what data we have or need, add a Goal Four, which was enforcement, including service-resistant lobbying and enhancing municipal code and ordinances. The next was develop smart goals. The next one was Goal Three, identify ways to address barriers to permanent housing. The next one was including a Housing Navigator. The next one was do, conduct our own citywide count. The next one was to create a by-name list, citywide by-name list. The next was to discourage outside advertising with a goal of serving local residents. The next was coordinate with county supervisors. And then the last one was the Housing First that addresses barriers to permanent housing.
And when you say Housing First, that the HAP won't, doesn't require Housing First?
I was going to ask for clarification from Councilmember O'Hara on that.
Looking for not to require Housing First as, just to take it as a...
So don't mandate Housing First in the document.
Correct.
That's one. And then I think you also said, address housing barriers.
Correct, yeah.
That was, that was his addition.
And that was in an earlier one. That was in one, two, three, four, Goal Three.
Maybe I made the assumption when you said housing barriers, you were referring to drug, contingent care type of drug policies.
No, what I meant was, I was like talking about barriers to...
Affordable?
To the creation of affordable permanent, or, you know, permanent temporary solutions, what the true barriers are, identifying them, and...
With SB 330, like, is it housing?
So that was in one, two, three, that was in Goal Four, adding that to Goal Three.
Yes.
Identify ways to address barriers to affordable permanent housing.
So by stating it, address barriers, I think that's going to be, I will accept that. I was going to suggest barriers and provide solutions. But by wording it, number three, as identify and address barriers to affordable housing, it's acceptable, and it seems to be the most significant change.
And I believe he did it as a substitute motion, so technically, it's not a friendly amendment. It's a substitute motion in and of itself, although it could have been handled either way, because it was a minor amount. Is that what the clerk understands?
Yes. There was a motion and a second, and then Councilmember O'Hara made a substitute motion with a second by Councilmember Schifer.
And the clarification is that the item three, affordable housing, is identify and address barriers to affordable housing. I'm just looking for clarification. I'm not trying to suggest...
Goal number three was identify ways to address barriers to affordable permanent housing.
Yes, thank you.
So we handle the substitute motion first, correct?
That's correct.
So are there any other, no other comments? If not, let's vote on the, and they're very similar, but there's just subtle differences. So, and just so everybody understands, if the substitute motion passes, then we don't have to do anything else. If it fails, then we go back to the first motion.
And that motion carries unanimously.
And I think we're done, right? We can adjourn. And thank you for hanging around.